Get started. Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. All members present. If you'll be with me, I'd like to read the following. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter Thirty A, Subsection Eighteen, and the Governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. WCTV nine Comcast Xfinity and Channel thirty-seven on the right. You can also livestream this meeting at wctv.org. This meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance or members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would wish to enter the meeting while in progress may also do so by telephone by dial six four six five five eight eight six five six and enter the ID number eight seven five zero three three one one five three nine, then press pound and pound again, and at the next voice prompt, members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment by the following steps previously noted, then press star nine on the telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. All callers using this feature will be placed in queue in order as they are entered the prompt. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, we will record this meeting on the town website as soon as we are able. With that, everybody, we'll call for a roll call. Selectmen. Kevin, are you there?
I'm here.
Selectmen Eaton?
McCoy?
Yeah.
Mrs. Omaha.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, all members are present, and good evening to all of you. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is the nation, the God, the world, the unity, and the justice for all. Thank you very much, and good evening to all of you. Again, we're meeting remotely, and if you'd like to join us with a public comment later on the meeting, WCTV will provide the phone number to call in. We encourage you to do so during that time. We have a number of guests on tonight, and we'll get to them in just a moment, but first, if we could, transmitted of Treasury warrants forty-six, sixty-six A, forty-seven, and forty-seven A, is there a motion?
Selectmen Eaton will make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it. Selectmen Omaha, I'll second it.
Thank you. There's a motion made by Mr. Eaton, seconded by Mrs. Omaha. Go with a roll call vote.
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Omaha?
Yes.
Mr. Bendel is a yes. It's unanimous. We have approval of one set of minutes from September ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Omaha, seconded by Mr. Eaton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Omaha?
Yes.
Mr. Bendel is also a yes. It's unanimous. Okay, now we get to go to the fun part here. And our first appointment is with Kevin Preslin, a young man, a Wilmington middle schooler from the sixth grade at the Wilmington Middle School, who's been awfully busy this quarantine, bittering his community, doing a lot. You may have seen him recently on the Wilmington Apple and the Talk of the Town on WCTV, where he did a phenomenal interview, and he has done a fantastic thing that I'll let him describe for the Wilmington Fire Department. So we wanted to have Kevin come on. He's with us live. Kevin, can you wave to the camera so everybody sees you?
Hello.
There he is. So Kevin, thanks for being on with us, man. We're really excited to have you, and go ahead and tell us, what did you do for the Wilmington Fire Department?
For the Wilmington Fire Department, I've customized and I printed out twenty ear savers using my three D printer.
Awesome. So these ear savers, they're so that you can be a little more comfortable when you're wearing a mask, right? We got one on the screen here?
Yes.
And I can't even imagine, I wear a mask when I go to the grocery store for ten, fifteen, twenty minutes. I can't imagine wearing one all day, so I would have to imagine that our first responders are really, really going to appreciate that. We have Chief Kavanaugh on the line with us. Chief, this is pretty awesome that this young man took the time out of his pandemic on top of his schoolwork to do this for your department.
It's a great thing. I think the men and women down there greatly appreciate it. I know that they have to be in masks quite a bit more than I have to. However, they have seen some benefit from this. It's a great idea, and we really appreciate that Kevin thought of us when he decided to take that time out and to make these to help in the pandemic.
Yeah, it's really, really an awesome idea, and Kevin, what gave you the idea? What did you think of this? Did you think of this yourself? Was it something you saw online, on TV?
I originally saw like ear savers online quite a while ago. Then my dad reminded me of them, and I decided to start printing them.
That is awesome, and we're glad you did, man. We're really glad. So listen, I know some of the members of the Board of Selectmen are here, and they may want to say hello or have a question for you. Is that okay?
That's okay.
Awesome. We'll start with my Mr. Kyra.
Yeah, hey, Kevin, what a great first name. I like it.
I like it too.
There you go. I can, I can just envision you in a couple of years from now appearing on a TV show called Shark Tank. Have you ever seen that before?
I've heard of it.
Yeah, where the inventors go on and they, they have something and they become millionaires. So I can see you doing that after what you're doing here. But I just want to thank you for what you're doing on behalf of our first responders. It's a great, great thing what you're doing, stepping up and taking time out of your day to do that, and it's just great. I watched that Talk of the Town interview, and that was really interesting about using a three D computer or something. I don't even know how to use my, my regular computer. I'm lucky I'm on this. So how does that work?
So on the computer, what I do is I load a three D file into a program called Tinkercad, where then I can customize it, and after that, I export it out into a program called Flashprint, where I load it onto a USB drive, plug it into my three D printer, and then using rolls of filament, which is basically just coy strands of plastic, it melts it down into the shape near of whatever design I put into it, which in this case are ear savers.
That's great. Kevin, how old are you?
I'm twelve.
You're twelve, okay? I'm fifty-nine, so I don't know what you said, but that, that's great, because I'm on the older end. All that new technology stuff is wonderful. I'm glad you're doing it. But thank you very much for what you're doing for the town, for the, for the first responders. It's really great that you're, you're putting effort behind that. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Mr. Eaton, it wasn't long ago you were in the sixth grade.
A few weeks ago, Mr. Bendel. Kevin, thank you very much for doing this. I think the idea that you had to take an interest of yours and a skill of yours and put it towards something positive like that, I think, is very admirable. One of my favorite quotes is from Teddy Roosevelt, who said, "Do what you can with what you have where you are." I think everybody is very uncomfortable in this situation, cooped up, not able to see the people that we would want to as frequently as we could, and you took, you had the initiative to take a skill of yours and a tool that you've figured out how to master and create something to help out our first responders. My hat's off to you. It's a privilege to be on this board and serve folks like you, because it's, I, you are the best Wilmington has to offer, so keep it up. I am looking forward to seeing you on Shark Tank in a couple of years. If you have the ability to come up with a way to prevent folks like me who have glasses, who wear face masks, by having them fog up, there's several of us who were at the Wildwood Cemetery for a ceremony yesterday, and the masks just were fogging it up, and we all looked rather foolish. So if you have that ability, I think you have a million-dollar idea. But thanks again, Mr. Kevin, and keep up the great work.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, Kevin, I want to thank you and your parents, but you really, I was thinking right outside the box, and I know Selectmen Kyra said something about a moment ago about, have you ever seen, what is it, Shark Tank? I'm with you, I really haven't seen it myself, but I'll do one a little better. What you need to do after this broadcast, get a good lawyer, put a patent on that, and then you'll never have to worry about ever working again, and then you can take care of your folks and your family, as they've taken care of you, but you're twelve years old, and I'll tell you, that's above my pay grade. I'm going to be retiring soon, so if you need a driver, let me know, and I'm there.
If I were to go on Shark Tank, I would probably do something else, because I do not want to patent ear savers. Otherwise, I don't think other people would really have access to like print them themselves if they don't have the proper access to them. But I would totally do something else.
For you, man.
You're a bright lad. I want to wish you all the best. You really bring out the best in students and kids in your age out in this town. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And Mrs. Omaha?
Sure. Kevin, I've, we've met before. I've met you and your dad, Stu, before, and I just wanted to tell you again how proud I am of you. I know how much community service you do with your, with your family. It's not a surprise to me that you came up with something like this. I, I watched Talk of the Town too, and I was equally as proud of you for coming up with this idea, but also that you're staying connected to friends, that even though it's a struggle, it's a struggle, believe me, it's a struggle as a parent right now with Google Classroom and, and the things that you were talking about with all the distractions. I'm glad that you're keeping up with your schoolwork. I'm glad that you're staying connected to your friends. I'm glad that you're having driveway visits with your grandmother, and I'm really proud of you for coming up with, with this great idea to help, you know, to, to do something beyond yourself and your family. Like, I know you and your dad are always looking to do, so I'm very proud of you. If you haven't already joined the robotics club, I hope you join it next year, because my son will be in eighth grade, and they definitely need your brain to keep crushing it like they have been, so definitely get tapped into that if you're not, because it sounds like you, you'd be coming up with some winning ideas for the high school team.
I was considering joining this year, but the only thing was I already, like, my schedule was already full for almost the entire week between like drama club and various other things. I didn't really have time for it this year. I'm probably going to join next year, though.
Good. Well, if you have any questions, you have your dad email me, because they would love to have you, and my son alternated between that club and a different club, and they're super flexible, and I think you would really love it. If you're a Science Pirate, you would love to be on the robotics club team.
I'm a Science Pirate.
And Kevin, we also have the town manager on the line. He's, he's the ones that runs the town day to day, and he's the one keeping you cooped up in your driveway right now, so here's your chance to let him know that you want to get out, but I want to give, give him the opportunity to stay along too. Mr. Hall?
Yes, Kevin, I just am really impressed with not only the idea, but your willingness to do something for other people. It speaks volumes for your, for yourself and, and your family, and I can only imagine in five years, ten years, what you'll be doing, so enjoy, enjoy this time and come up with some new ideas and keep us posted on what your next, your next idea is. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So Kevin, I know you're a busy man. We're going to wrap this up, because I know it's a school night for you. Other things going on, but I want to give you the opportunity, maybe you want to give a shout out. Does anybody at school or friends or family you want to say hello to while you're, you're on live television? There's like twenty-five thousand Wilmington people watching this.
Um, currently, so I'm only going to shout out probably the most important people, otherwise I'd be shouting out almost every single person I know. So like only the people that like really help, so I'm going to shout out my family. My parents are over there. I have cousins pretty much all over the US. Shout out to all of them. I'd like to give a shout out to Michelle Taugh from Science Pirates, Science Pirates. She was the one who really got me into three D printing originally when we took a field trip to the Wilmington Library. I would also like to give a shout out to all the staff members at the Wilmington Library for helping me learn the three D print and overall being really great people. And I'd also like to give a shout out to all my teachers at Wilmington Middle School. All you guys are amazing. I'd also like to give a shout out to all my friends.
Awesome, man.
Always being friendly.
You're doing great, man. I think you could, if you wanted to, but thank you so much. I know your teachers must be really proud of you. I know your family must be really proud of you. We're really proud of you. We're really grateful that you did this, and we weren't the only ones that noticed. We got some really good news as we leave you. Our friends at Wilmington House of Pizza noticed your good deeds, and they're going to set you up with a fifty-dollar gift card to the Wilmington House of Pizza. And then also, our friends at AJ Kitchen called, and they saw your story, and they want to give you a fifty-dollar gift card as well. So you're walking out of here with a hundred dollars in gift cards, so some awesome to eat in town, and we'll get you set up with those tomorrow. How's that sound?
That sounds great. I love both of those places.
Well, I think you've earned it, my man.
Also, if they want, I can also print out some ear savers for them too.
You're always thinking, man. You're thinking of a bright future, so keep it up. We're really proud of you. Thanks so much for coming on, and we'll get you those gift cards tomorrow, okay?
Okay.
All right, thanks, Kevin.
You're welcome.
That was awesome. Okay. Thanks for letting us do that. Kevin's just another example of so many good things going on in town despite difficult times. People are facing some very unique challenges, and if that doesn't give you a smile, I'll put a smile on your face, I don't know what will, so really proud of Kevin. Next up, we have our COVID-nineteen update, and this time, we're going to do it a little bit differently. We're going to hear from our fire chief and our health director, but we want to also highlight some people that have been affected by this maybe the most in a very unique way, and that's the graduating class of two thousand and twenty. I don't think we've ever had a graduating class that had to deal with circumstances that the class of two thousand and twenty has had to deal with, and so we're very pleased to welcome both valedictorians from Wilmington High School and Shawshank Tech are with us live tonight, and so we want to welcome in Sooth Keith Ram from Wilmington High School. Sooth Keith Ram, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you perfectly.
And am I correct, and no, you go by Sukie?
Yeah, Sukie works just fine.
All right, awesome. And we also have Shayla Lee from Shawshank Tech. She's the valedictorian for the Rams, and she is a Tewksbury resident, but we are all going to treat her as if she was one of our own. Shayla, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Very well, thanks. So listen, we are so excited for both of you and your entire classes to be coming up to graduation, and although it'll be a little bit different this year for your class, it's still just as exciting. What a monumental moment it'll be later next week for Shawshank and, and next week for Wilmington High School to graduate, and you'll notice that all members of the board have the Wilmington Wildcats flag proudly presented in the background in support of the Wildcats, but I also want to let people know that I haven't forgotten about the Rams, so I've got my finger here, Shayla, okay? And I'm wearing my proud symbol of my alma mater, Shawshank Tech, so.
Thank you.
Sukie, we'll start with you. I know that you're headed off to Philadelphia next year. Why don't you tell us a little bit about what you, what your plans are? I think you're heading to Drexel, is that correct?
Yep, that is correct. So I'm definitely excited to go to Drexel University. I just recently enrolled into their BSMD program, which basically gives me automatic acceptance into their medical school four years from now, so I'm definitely excited to do that. I'll be entering with a major in biology, but I'm considering switching into biomedical sciences or just biomedical engineering, still a bit undecided on that, but I'm definitely, I'm definitely excited for whatever the city has to offer, like any courses. I'm just really excited for what Philadelphia has.
Absolutely. Sounds like you've earned every bit of that, and we certainly wish you the best, best of luck down there.
Thanks, Sean.
You, you are going to be a graduate of Design and Visual Communications, same program that I'm a graduate of, which means you survived four years with Mr. A.
Yes, I did.
With my, as well. So, and you're headed off to New York City, correct?
Yes, I am, assuming we're on campus. I've heard that NYU is going back or planning on going back in the fall, so I'm thinking that Parsons will be doing the same thing.
So it's the Parsons School of Design, correct?
Yep.
Awesome. And so what, what do you, you mind sharing what's your, what's your ultimate goal? Do you have a plan in mind?
So I'm, I'm going to be going into the Communications Design or Illustration Department as far as I'm aware. The foundation year gets you exposed to a bunch of different, like, art practices, so I might change my mind, but we'll see. It get, the illustration path gets you into like advertising and a bunch of other like commercial stuff, but you could also do like freelance illustration, animation. There's like a lot of paths you can go with it, and you kind of figure that out as you go through the programs.
Awesome. We certainly wish you well as, also. And so I know that the board members might have some, some questions for you guys, but I, I, I just want to ask both of you guys, right from someone who's about to graduate, what's this all been like? I mean, you've been out of school now for some time and been, you know, doing the remote learning, and you've been away from your teachers and your friends. It's got to be challenging. Sukie, tell us, what's it been like being, doing the remote learning?
Um, it's definitely a different experience, experience than what we used to. I, I think it's the first time in my life that we can say we officially learned away from school. I mean, at first, I think everybody was kind of excited for it, but over time, as quarantine just kind of kept lengthening itself, I think people were kind of, I mean, I'll say even I was kind of, I'd rather go to school than kind of be in this state. So over time, I'm, obviously, remote learning isn't the optimal solution, but I'm still happy that schools and the teachers are trying to do whatever they can, and I've found that they've really been helpful for my AP exams or just for just learning anything that I needed to, so I'm just really grateful that we're still able to have this even in this scenario.
Absolutely. And Shayla, it's got to be extremely unique for you. You, you went to Shawshank, and you're used to having that hands-on experience and being in the shop with Mr. A and Ms. Eagle and Ms. O and, and Mr. Micho. What's it been like trying to balance the academics and the shop life from home?
So we're still, we've still been following the week on academics and then the week on shop schedule, so we get our stuff for academics on a week one schedule, and all of that's due Friday, so it's basically each class just gives you all the assignments at the beginning of the week, and then you work on them as you can. I'm not sure how the grading is going to work out yet, because there's a lot in quarter four that's been up in the air, and then shop week, we just get an assignment from Mr. A, and then we just work on it when we can, really. It's a lot different than being in shop and in school, clearly, because we're, we can't see our friends, we can't see our teachers. I know that my English class especially has been really good about scheduling calls, but not everyone shows up to them, so there's definitely a missing out on the social aspect and the interaction part. I was supposed to be, or I was supposed to do track for my senior year this season, and that got canceled, so we're all, we're missing a bunch of stuff, but at the same time, I'm really happy that the school is trying so hard to still give us events and that kind of thing that will make up for, in whatever way they can, for what we're missing.
Yeah, Shayla, I don't think you need to worry about grades. You don't seem, they don't strike first needs to worry about getting a good grade. I think you're going to do just fine here in fourth quarter, but listen, I know the board members might have some questions about your, your big speeches are coming up. I know they might be recorded or whatnot, but you still got a big speech coming up. But Shayla, I'm just going to get this question right out of the way, because I know you're a neighbor from Tewksbury. Everybody here is wondering, have you found that monkey yet?
I'm pretty sure it was found. I haven't been hearing much about it, but I, yeah, I'm pretty sure they found it.
All right, Mr. Kyra, we've got two really fine students here. You want to say hello?
Unbelievable. Yeah, just can't imagine what you're going through, first off, the adversity that you have to deal with and missing out on so many things, but hopefully, in, in the end, it won't be as bad as what you may think it is now, you know? You're going to be giving your speeches? Is that what Mr. Bendel had mentioned? You're still going to do that?
Yeah.
Yep.
So there's going to be a ceremony for each school?
We're thinking.
Uh, there's going to be a virtual ceremony.
Okay.
But if, like, if, if it's permitted by the state, I think eventually we're going to have a, an actual ceremony sometime in July, but I've heard that there still is like some guidelines, like students have to stay six feet away, so what I've understood is that it's not going to be like a traditional ceremony, but it's still going to be outside and like others.
And Shayla, how about Shawshank Tech, they're having a ceremony as well?
So we're definitely planning on doing something. I think we've ruled out a virtual graduation, because we didn't seem like the students, we had a conference with some students from each shop, and overwhelmingly, we all said we didn't want to just do a virtual graduation, like that wouldn't substitute for us. So it sounds like as soon as we hear more, we're, we're still waiting to hear information from the school, but I'm pretty sure we're going to either do shop-based graduations or, and we'll have like separate ceremonies. Otherwise, we'll probably wait until we can do a full ceremony.
That's, that's good to hear. I hope, I hope it happens, and it should happen. It's well-deserved, what, what the both of you have accomplished and what your fellow students have accomplished, and it, and it's not gone unnoticed, and you, you know, you drive around town and you see these banners that are behind me, or you see signs up congratulating the twenty-twenty, class of twenty-twenty, and it's, it's well-deserved, and for what you've gone through, and I can't imagine it, it's just amazing, and, and you're still pushing through, you're getting ready for college next year, and hopefully, that will start right on time, and everybody will be safe and healthy going into their college of choice, but you know, just, just kudos for what you've accomplished and what you're doing, and to your parents as well, and this goes out to all the, the students at Wilmington High School and Shawshank Tech, and to the parents for what they've been going through the past three months as well, in trying to make sure that everything works out well for, for you guys, you know? But what you've accomplished is just amazing, and congratulations. I, you know, it's just wonderful what you're doing, and this world is going to be a better place because of people like the two of you and the graduates of two thousand and twenty having gone through such a crazy time. That's, that's all I can say about that, but as, as Forrest Gump said, right? That's all I can say about that. But anyways, good luck. Good luck next year and the next four years, and can't wait to hear about your accomplishments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Mr. Eaton?
Uh, yeah, I, congratulations to both of you. Certainly, this is not the senior year that, that either of you were anticipating or hoping for, and it's certainly very frustrating, I'm sure, to not have a prom or a senior season of track, or to be able to have the last couple of weeks of school with the folks that you've grown up with and become close friends with, but I congratulate both of you and all of your classmates for making it and graduating. Shayla, Parsons is a great school, and the arts and design environment in New York is fantastic, so it sounds like you've got at least a pretty good direction, and you're putting yourself in a position to succeed, so that's very promising. Sukie, with all of the, the attention that, that our medical personnel, doctors and nurses and the like have gotten, especially the last two and a half months, I think your, your goal of getting yourself into medical school and your drive and, and certainly your academic record is all the more admirable, so congratulations, and we're, you know, we need more good doctors, and I, I hope that, that you get there, and it's a long way ahead of you, and there's a lot of late-night studying, but certainly a very admirable profession to pursue, so congratulations to both of you, to all of the seniors, whether they're at Wilmington High or Shawshank Tech. I have to plug my own school, Austin Prep, but congratulations to all of the seniors for making it through it, and despite the fact that the end has not been as you had hoped, hopefully, you have the opportunity to celebrate in some way with all your comrades, so congrats again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know Sluckman Kyra and Sluckman Eaton and the chairman said it best. And I want to wish you both the best of your future uh future endeavors. I know you had to go through a lot, class of twenty twenty and uh my son Chris is a wildcat, my other two children are two rand, so I want to let you know I get the best of both worlds. And I think it's really remarkable on what you two are planning on doing for the rest of your lives. And I really hope that you both and as well as everybody in the class of twenty twenty experience uh going to college um in person, one-on-one. I mean, that's the whole college experience. Many of us go to college. I mean, I can never imagine this ever happened to any of us in the past. It's just a great experience going to school and either living there or commuting home or or whatever you uh uh young adults plan to do. But I want to wish you both the best. You really uh re- represent what's the best in Wilmington, what's the best in Tewksbury. And uh, I just want to wish you nothing but all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCoy, Mrs. Omahaoni?
Yes, so I found this today, thankfully. Um, I'm gonna put my soul on since I'm talking to the valedictorians. I was inducted into the National Honor Society in Wilmington High School in two thousand and eighteen, Burlington High School in nineteen ninety-four. And I'm gonna double down on the statement that I'm gonna be the only Omahaoni to wear one of these in Wilmington. Uh, kids not watching, but I think I gave myself twenty-five percent chance of of being a parent at a ceremony. And now I'm saying zero since I've been teaching them for the last three months and see what their capabilities are. Um, you know, I I I was the class president at Burlington High School and I got to give a speech uh at our graduation and I have to say it was, you know, it was definitely one of the more memorable parts of my high school experience. So I'm so sorry that you're not gonna get to do that in a more traditional way. Um, but you know, I when when I was kind of thinking of what I wanted to to say to the both of you and to your classmates. Um, you know, don't, don't let whatever the experience is right now lessen all that you've achieved. Uh, because you're you've you've you're the valedictorians of your class, it which is amazing. And you know, everyone graduating has has a great accomplishment, whether you're able to walk across a stage or not. I don't want you to feel like that's lessened because of what we're going through right now. And when I was thinking of you guys, you know, someone had said at one point, you guys were born right around nine eleven, right? So you don't remember the worlds before then, but we all do. Um, and in in somewhat similar circumstances, you know, things were changed permanently after that event. Uh, our economics changed, our social issues changed with safety um and different protocols that we had to follow that we never had to follow before then. So you were born into that situation and now you're graduating in a pandemic. So if nothing else, you guys have already shown what like badass warriors you are. Um, so don't, sorry, WC. Um, don't, don't let anyone take that away from you. I know it's very disappointing. Um, you know, as a parent, when you see your kids at their preschool graduation, you can only think of them at their high school graduation. So be patient with your parents right now. If they're kind of struggling with um not being able to see you do all the things that they've been waiting to see you do. But we'll be here waiting for you. So whenever we're able to celebrate you in person, we'll do it. Um, but until then, just enjoy this time, enjoy it the best you can. Keep planning for these amazing futures that you have and and just know that we're we're so proud of all of you and all that you've accomplished and all that you've endured in this in this time. So really, I'm really proud of the both of you and all of your classmates um for for sticking it out and and getting it done.
Thank you so much.
And I'll take this off because I don't want my my fellow board members to be jealous.
Not a concern.
It's awesome prep.
Mr. Hall, uh, no pressure, but were you the class president?
I cannot say that I was, no. Uh, but what I what I will say is to uh just congratulate you both and you know, one of the comments that uh that I would offer that uh, you know, I um I think has a tremendous amount of meaning in a in a variety of circumstances, but particularly in this one. Uh, Viktor Frankl, who was a uh in a concentration camps uh for a good stretch of his time uh commented that the events of our lives are not as important as our attitudes towards them. And I think there is no more uh poignant a moment than where we are right now that clearly these aren't the circumstances that any of us would have anticipated. But as you two have demonstrated, you have the wherewithal and the a determination to get over hurdles. And this is perhaps uh one of the bigger ones. But I I think it demonstrates to me anyways that you'll do well going forward in whatever uh adventures you pursue and whatever hurdles uh you come across uh going forward. So good luck.
Thank you.
So uh, I think it's been said, we're we're all so proud of you. We know your uh your principals, Ms. Peters and Ms. Cook are really, really proud of you, along with all the teachers at your school. Uh, and just really, really proud of this entire class, like everyone's kind of described how unique the class of twenty twenty will be such an unforgettable uh class to come through both schools. And uh, we certainly wish you well. We gotta gotta imagine both uh your families are so proud of you to finish first in your class. What an outstanding achievement that is. Uh, so many students. And uh, and so when we we announced that we're gonna have you guys on, we also uh got a couple of calls from some people that would like to give you guys some some prizes. Is that okay?
Uh, yeah, sure.
All right, so uh, little ladies first, is that all right, Suki?
Sounds perfect, yeah.
Well, Shayla, uh, when we when we announced that we're gonna have you on, we got a call from our good friends at EJ's Pizza in Wilmington. You're gonna have to come over to Wilmington, okay? We're not giving away. But we have a fifty dollar gift card to EJ's Pizza for you. And then we also have uh another fifty dollar gift card for you from our friends at La Rosa's here in town as well, two great places. So I think you've earned that much and just a little token of uh our appreciation and in this community's uh gratitude for all the work you put in and how proud we are of you and your class, okay?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And uh, and uh, Suki, we also have a couple of prizes for you. We have uh our friends at EJ's Pizza stepped up for a fifty dollar gift card to you. And also another fifty dollar gift card uh for you to Rocco's Restaurant. And so we'll get you set up with those and uh we really appreciate those local businesses um stepping up and recognizing your outstanding achievements. And also want to give a special shout out to my friend, uh, Robert Hayes, who helped kind of behind the scenes set this up. And and I, everyone's going out and do the best they can to support our local businesses. And even during challenging times, these places are still giving back to the community. And I can't think of two better people to to want to be prizes. So we'll get you set up with those tomorrow. Okay? And uh, I think you guys deserve it. So have some great food on us.
Yeah, thank you guys so much. I really appreciate the offer.
Yeah.
And I know uh your schools have a lot of great stuff planned for you over the next week. Wilmington High School's going into senior week here. Uh, Shayla, sorry, you got one more week of school. You can sign out Friday.
Yeah.
A lot of good stuff. I know Ms. Kyra's been working her tail off. You got a promenade coming up Thursday. I'll be there to help out and a lot of good stuff. So you guys uh want to just uh, anything you're looking forward to over the next week or so before you actually graduate officially, Suki?
Uh, I'm just looking forward to, I'm not particularly not particularly in the next week, but I'm just kind of looking forward to when I guess our social life can like resume again. Because uh, I mean, I do like my alone time, but alone time for six months is too much. I I appreciate the uh company of others, so I'm definitely looking uh towards that first moment.
I don't think you're gonna have a problem with that. I think you're the type of guy people are gonna want to be around, Suki.
Oh, thank you.
You're like a really sharp guy. And Shayla, is there something in particular you're looking forward to here in the next couple of weeks?
Well, I am looking forward to the promenade. Um, that should be fun. I know they're trying to do whatever they can for us. Um, I know we have another little parade around um Bill Recker in Wilmington on next Tuesday, I believe, or Monday, June first. Um, so they're they're doing what they can and I really appreciate it. Um, it'll be nice to still kind of dress up in the spirit of prom and that kind of stuff on Thursday.
I think that'll be awesome. So once again, we can't thank you guys enough for joining us here, coming on, and we are so proud of you. We're so proud of your class, the class of twenty twenty. We wish you all the best and from our our town to you and your class, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thanks so much for coming on. All right. I feel like Oprah given out, sorry, Chief Cavanaugh, I don't have any prizes for you.
One of your prizes. Probably a purple finger.
I gotta show Shayla, I gotta show this one more time. My alma mater here. Okay. Um, so switching gears, uh, thanks, everybody for letting us do that. Uh, Suki and Shayla, you don't have to stick around. You guys probably have much more important things to do. Uh, hang around with us. But uh, we're gonna switch gears and under our COVID update, uh, thanks for everybody for letting us do that. Uh, because like I said at the beginning of this, I don't think anybody's been affected as much as the class of twenty twenty. So I think it's really important that we heard from those two and honored them tonight. But we also want to uh hear much more serious updates and I'll start with our health director, Shelley Newhouse. Shelley, can you hear me all right?
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Shelley. I know you've been extremely busy. Uh, do you want to listen on uh some of the latest numbers or anything that's going on in your office?
Sure, we've had um, we've had, right now we have seventeen positives um in Wilmington, four in quarantine, which is uh, we're kind of hovering under twenty for the past couple two weeks, which is nice. Uh, we go up a few, down a few, up a few, but it's it's been okay. Um, it's been really busy with reopening Massachusetts. It's been crazy with trying to help businesses figure out if they can open, how they can open, how they can operate. Lots of complaints, lots of questions. Um, it's just been very, very busy, nonstop with with that stuff. And we're trying not to forget about the um actual patients that we have out there and focus on them, but also trying to get a little bit more normalcy in the town. So it's been difficult, but I have a great staff. They've been great.
Absolutely. There's no question about it. We do uh offer our condolences to the family. We know we uh some some family lost a loved one. And so we are thinking of them tonight, want to offer our condolences. Uh, Chief Kavanaugh, as uh the rest of the community slowly but surely starts to get back to normal, uh, your department and the police department and dispatch are still right in the thick of it. They're getting calls and uh you guys are right there every time. So you want to update us a little bit from your your angle?
Yep, thanks. So that that's correct. I mean, it it hasn't slowed down for us. Um, you know, myself, Chief Desmond decided we, you know, as things return to normal, started opening back up that we had to switch gears. So you're seeing us do less parades, which we had a great time with. Uh, thought that was our little thing that we could help uh with the community, make a kind of a tough time for the kids a little bit better. Um, but the police are back to normal operating uh procedures, so slow down. You're gonna get a ticket. Dispatch has still been doing what they're supposed to do. Uh, they've been handling uh quite a bit of calls, the call volume is. Um, you know, it's slow in the beginning, but it's ticking right back up for us. Uh, same with Shelley. We're trying to keep up with the uh the updates on the PPE and things opening, what we can do, what we can't do. So it's an adjustment period for us all. Uh, a couple of things I I just want to kind of throw out there um in talking with uh my personnel with the traffic picking back up. I need people to go down around the station. We had two trucks almost get hit in the last week uh while they were trying to back in the station. So that's that's something we want to watch out for. And uh, I had some conversations with our um substance abuse mental health board and our Sam Reeve. And um, you know, she's seeing some uptick in the um relapses that are going on with people who have some really good sobriety time. Uh, one of the things that we've, you know, we've seen as well is an uptick in some of the mental health calls uh that have been going on too. So we have a uh, or she has a product called Detera. It's a bag that you can dispose of prescription drugs, uh liquid pill or pad form. So if you have that stuff later on your house, I know typically you would come into the station and drop it off in the lobby and our lobby's still closed to the public the most part. But if you do need that stuff, please call the station, ask for Samantha Reeve. You can leave a uh message on her voicemail. You can email her. It's S R E I F at W P D dot org. Or again, call the station, uh, police or fire, and we can take care of uh all of that for you. So uh, those are the things that are really going on now. I'm I'm happy to report that we still uh, you know, don't have any positive or quarantine firefighters, police officers, dispatchers. So that's a great thing. Uh, things are getting slowly back to normal. We're starting to send some of our firefighters back to a modified fire academy. So we're excited to get moving forward and uh get back to normal around here.
Great. Thank you both. I know uh members might have some uh some questions. I'm glad you mentioned the parades. It's, I think it was upwards of close to fifty, maybe more parades you guys participated in. And I know that that went over awesome. I think Sluckman Kyra brought it up at a recent meeting, how how appreciative I think the community has been of that. But I think I think you're right. It's time to uh to make sure that you guys are readily available for everybody's needs as we start to see an increase in traffic, an increase of number of people out back out in the community. Uh, we'll go down the list here. Mr. Kyra?
Yeah, I just um, again, Shelley and Chief, thank you. Thanks to your staff and what you're doing uh keeping us all safe. Uh, just a quick question, Shelley, on, I know we're in the phase one plan and uh, when do you anticipate us going into phase two and so forth? That I'm sure you get, you you probably get quadrupled the number of calls I do uh from people saying, when can we go outside and play baseball and softball? And you know, over the weekend, you see uh over at the Woburn Street School, there's a a group of kids playing soccer and it looked like they kept themselves, you know, apart, which was good, the the way they were doing it. Um, the, is the governor's plan in phase two, three, four? I know it's all difficult to call and and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but how do you see it going? Or do you not? Do you just going into the fall and into the winter and hoping we don't have a a resurgence of this terrible?
I think um, the next couple of weeks will show with our numbers because while we're in phase one, so another two weeks, we should see if we have another spike in in positives. They like, the governor is recommending like uh three weeks in between phases, but it's probably gonna be more than that between before we get phase two. There's just no date, um, certain. They're not trying to focus on a date. Um, every, that's the big question, you know, what's the date for the next phase? What's the date for the next phase? But there is no date yet. Um, it could be second week of June or it could be the end of June. We're just not sure. Um, it's really not our call. We're just, if everyone keeps doing good social distancing and wearing masks and in um practicing all that, hopefully our numbers will stay low throughout the state so we can.
Yeah, I I I hope you're right. I hope people, I hope people heed that, you know? I mean, all of us were at the Memorial Day celebration on on Monday and everybody had masks on for the most part and kept kept social distancing and and uh so if if people continue to do that, and and I know it's difficult for the for the young folk out there because they want to go out and play and and you know, just meet up and have a good time sometimes, but they just have to understand that they can be what asymptomatic and and carry something to someone else. So um ho- hopefully, you know, it will, it it won't be as long as three weeks in between and we can get back to more of a normalcy. Again, thank you for what you're doing, uh, Sam, you chief and and your staff and and the police as well. Thank you. And and let me throw in also DPW and in public buildings uh for what they do, the Veterans Office, the the senior center, everybody in town, talking about a a a real group effort and trying to keep everybody safe. Thank you.
Absolutely, Mr. Kyra. Thank you. Mr. Eaton?
Hi, I want to thank Mr. Kyra for bringing up the uh the other departments as well. I'm I'm glad that we're having our regular updates with uh the Chief Kavanaugh and Ms. Newhouse. Um, I'm glad that um we made mention of the other departments that are really uh doing the best that they can uh given the circumstances. Uh, to uh you, Chief Kavanaugh and uh you, Ms. Newhouse, um, thank you again for everything that you're doing. Is there anything that either of you need from us?
No, I'm good.
Nope, we we seem to be doing well. We appreciate this.
Right. Well, again, thank you. Keep up the good work. I I uh, I think we're certainly in this for the long haul. Um, Ms. Newhouse, I want to uh thank you uh especially for the mask giveaway that that took place a couple of weeks ago. I know that that was, I saw. Uh, I saw some of the pictures of traffic backed up well into the Glen Road, uh, almost the King Street. So.
We're gonna do that again too. I think either the end of this week or the very beginning of next week.
That's great. Thank you. I'm glad, uh, glad you mentioned it then. So I, thank you. I, I know you guys are both putting in, uh, in your respective departments are putting in very long hours. Doing, uh, very difficult, dangerous work. I just wanted to thank you both and, uh, keep it up.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, you know, echo my colleagues, uh, to Chief Kavanaugh and Director Newhouse. I really appreciate the effort that you folks are doing. It really means a lot. Hopefully we get out of this over a period of the next couple of three months. I, I, hopefully that's the game plan. And I just wanna tell Director Newhouse, a week ago Saturday, I did take advantage like all the other citizens. As much as I could to go down to get those masks. And I think the women's in police department did a fantastic job. Uh, doing the traffic and everybody at the town hall did a great job and able to get a mask. I'm just wondering Shelley. Any idea how many masks that you gave out? Plus it was also the rubber gloves, which I think was a fantastic idea. And given it was really nicely packaged with the Ziploc bag, so it was not an issue at all. I was just curious, so how many, uh, packages did you give out Saturday? And I think you did hear that you're gonna do it again?
Yeah, I've given out thousands, thousands of masks. And we'll be giving, thanks to a nice generous donation from the Wilmington Community Fund. We have about twenty-five hundred more masks that we can give out this next go around. So.
That's great. No, I'm just curious, a week ago Saturday, did you kinda refuse anybody or did everybody was able to get masks?
No, every, everyone got, no one was left out, which was nice. The first go around I ran out, but this time I didn't.
Well, you did a great job. No, thanks.
So, yeah, I figured out probably people wanna, you know, refresh new masks. So we'll do, do it one more time.
Sounds great. Thank you.
And Mrs. Omahoney?
Yeah, so, hi, everybody. Thank you again, as always. Um, I think my question, you, you kinda touched upon it. Um, a little bit. I just wanna make sure it's clear that even though we're kind of in phase one. That the kind of the rules of wearing masks out in public, uh, still exist and social distancing still exists. Um, and I know, you know, certain businesses and certain, uh, outdoor, um, activities have been able to be reopened. And what, what is the phase two expectation? What's the next step?
I think more, more recreation will open in phase two. Group recreation, hopefully. That's, you know, different businesses that, um. Offer. Group settings, like I think they're gonna try to see if we can get some restaurants open with outdoor seating. I think that's probably what we'll see, see first. We won't see inside seating, but we'll see outdoor seating. Um, in restaurants. And, um, we'll just see in a couple of weeks, the, the weather cooperates, which, which it will, cause summer's coming. Where you can get some more outdoor recreation in, in restaurants open.
Okay. And then the other question I just had was, um, just kind of in reading, you know, over the last. Weekend and week about things reopening and kind of hearing a lot of people's, uh, viewpoints on it and kind of. Their interpretations of some of the things that have been said. Um, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it seems like one of the phrases that kind of keeps getting thrown out there now is herd immunity. Um, and that, you know, by reopening, we're kind of helping to encourage this herd immunity. And then you hear other studies where it says like, we're not even close to being able to accomplish that because we don't have. Numbers that we would need to have for that to be a thing. Um.
I don't think that's a thing. That's not gonna be a thing.
All right. Can you just explain what that even is? Just for people who are kind of. You know, reading whatever the, the trend is at the moment and thinking that that's a justification to not wear masks anymore?
It could be, it's, it's kind of like when you have, you know. It's hard to even think of it just in Wilmington. You have to think of it across the board because it's sort of like. COVID doesn't know the boundary lines between towns. So you have to have such a great number of those that were infected. And, um, then, so you have sort of like an immunity to. The virus. So we're definitely nowhere near that. We're not even near that in, for the state. I just don't think, uh, I have heard that term floating around, but I just don't see that, that happening. I think what I do see happening is another little wave, a spike probably coming. Closer to the fall, just because as we open up, people are starting to venture out and you have more. Contact with positive patients that you didn't know were positive. And so we'll see a jump in, in case numbers. So while we're seeing the trends go down now, we might plateau for a long time. Then we'll just, I think we'll see them jump up again. And then hopefully we'll see them plateau again. You kinda gotta look to the other countries that have been. Dealing with this. Um. They are now seeing as they, they reopen, we'll see what happens with them, but they're seeing spikes and. In other states, you know, you look at the warmer states, people have been out and about already for. You know, well over a month, like to the beaches and, and pools and things like that. And we're Massachusetts, we're just starting. New England, we're starting to just do things like that. So we'll see what happens, but I do think that will. I watch my numbers. It's, uh, it's interesting. I can't, I, I don't wanna say I'm looking forward to it, but I'm like looking. Forward to seeing what the numbers are going to be like. I hope they don't go up, but I won't be surprised if they do.
Oh, is, it's still important to wear masks, social?
Yes, very, very, very.
None, none of that's been lifted in phase one?
No, and I don't think it'll be lifted in phase two or phase three. That's gonna be with us for a while.
Thanks.
Mr. Hall, do you have anything you wanted to add?
I think Shelley's covered it, uh, very well. The, uh, the issue is, um. You know, real, really persistence here and it's certainly challenging. It's challenging for all of us, uh. To, uh, stick to this plan, but, uh, to the extent that we can and, uh, recognizing that people wanna be out and about, whether it's at the. Basketball courts, the baseball fields, the soccer fields, uh, just anywhere to be out. It's, the weather's getting good. Um, we, that, that just has to be done with a considerable amount of restraint. And if we can. Hang in there and do that, hopefully the numbers will continue to go down.
Absolutely. So, uh, any final message you, either of you wanna add before we, uh, we let you get back to the job at hand?
Nope. Thank you.
All right. Shelley, you'll let us know about the date once you finalize a date to give out more masks?
Yes. Yep, we're working on that. We started thinking about it today. So maybe end of the week or. Next week. I gotta talk to, uh, Chief Desmond and he would be thanks.
Great. I know the residents will really appreciate that. But we really appreciate, uh, both of you and your departments and all the departments that are, uh. Doing everything they can to keep, continue to keep us safe. We're not through the woods yet. So we appreciate that and we look forward to more updates from both of you. So, thank you very much and be safe. I wanna welcome in our assistant town manager, uh, Director of Human Resources, Carrie Coben-Dion. Is here for an update on the schedule of town operations in response to COVID nineteen. Carrie, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm happy to be here tonight to provide you an update on. What's happening in town with opening up, um, operation schedules for all the departments. Uh, since Governor Baker's March twenty-third executive order. Many of our departments have been operating as essential businesses. And so this plan really that we're, um, opening up is a continuation or an expansion of essential business operations. For most cases, and in others, it's, um, a phase one reopening of those departments who haven't really had much. Work that they were able to do because of the requirements. Though all employees have returned to work per department schedules. Some departments have shifts that are staggered as needed because of requirements to maintain. No more than twenty-five percent in office environments. And other than, uh, the lobby of the public safety building in very limited cases, the buildings remain closed to the public. Public Buildings Department is on their summer schedule already. Um, that typically doesn't occur until, um, after school gets out. But they have already begun to work on their summer schedule and will be doing the deep cleanings of each building as they typically do during the summer months. The DPW has been op, in operations and just this week they have opened up their offices, uh, all five days of the work week. Again, they're not open to the public, but someone is physically, most people are physically in the office. With the constraints of the twenty-five percent in each office. Five days a week. Elderly Services, um, continues to offer special meals. They deliver meals each day and then they have special meals usually on a weekly basis. And in June, they're planning to extend and expand their offerings to seniors. For transportation to healthy, uh, medical appointments, one person at a time. So the, uh, Shelley has reviewed the plan, um, that was defined by. Um, elderly services and they'll be following protocols to make sure that, um, safety. Requirements are met and the deep clean is done in between. Uh, the town hall as of today is open five days a week. It had been open four days a week for employees. And now we're on a full schedule of five days a week. Work, workdays, again, closed to the public, but we do, uh, provide services to the public. Either we meet them, um, at the front door or more often than not pass things to the public or other departments through the windows. Outside of our offices. So we're still continuing to meet the needs of the public. Um, such as providing stickers for, um, white goods. Or, uh, providing pay stubs to departments that aren't located within town hall. Or, um, if people need, um, to pay their taxes and they're overdue, um, on their taxes that. They get all the documentation that they need so that they can, uh, not have a hole placed on their, uh, license or lose their license. And beginning today, the library opened for curbside pickup for, uh, books. And you can order books ahead of time. Um, one of the requirements for all businesses, and I'm considering the town a business, um, that was put. With by the governor's task force was, um, to have a phase one self-certification. And that includes, um, COVID nineteen control plan that, um, we can put back up on the screen. And, um, the, the control plan includes, um, mandatory, uh, workplace safety standards. That consist of four items, uh, social distancing. Which is maintaining six feet apart inside and outside workplaces. Signage and markings on the floors for distancing, uh, face coverings at the workplace. Second item or category is hygiene protocols. And that includes hand washing for twenty seconds or more. Uh, or the use of hand sanitizer that contains at least sixty percent alcohol. Regular sanitation of high-touch areas throughout the work site. People are, uh. Reminded to clean their workspaces themselves. When they get in in the morning and before leaving in the afternoon. And commute, um, the third item or the third grouping is staffing and operations. And that includes training on social distancing and hygiene protocols that we just discussed. And communication to employees to stay home if they're displaying COVID symptoms. The fourth category of the control plan. Includes, uh, cleaning and disinfecting. And that is maintaining cleaning protocols that are consistent throughout all of our buildings. Cleaning and disinfecting a workspace and a building when an active employee tests positive. And disinfecting of all common surfaces on a regular basis. It also includes the welcome, um, is a compliance attestation poster that's been posted in all of our buildings. And what that, that attestation does is says that we have. Developed a control plan and we have met the requirements within the control plan. One of the most challenging things that we had to do was train all of our employees. Um, about the control plan. Uh, so. The way that we did that was through an email that was sent out to all employees who have town emails. Included a PowerPoint that just goes through all of the, um. The workplace sta, safety standards and just puts them in a different format. Um, it might be a little bit more fun to read. And the other thing, um, that was contained in the email, other than wording, um, of what the town requires, like. Wearing your face covering, um, when you're at the workplace. Was, um, I included five videos. So one of them was about proper use of face coverings. What is a proper face covering? Um, how do you wear a face covering? Another was proper hand washing techniques, how to wash your hands. Um, there was a little video that showed what you're supposed to do when you wash your hands. Another video on stopping the spread of germs in general. Um, the fourth video was on self-monitoring for symptoms to tell you what. The symptoms of COVID are and how you need to self-monitor before you go to work every day and think about those symptoms. To make sure that you're not coming to work if you're displaying the symptoms. And then the fifth video was on self-quarantining if you are required to do so by your doctor. So we have distributed, uh, the email to all employees for those employees who do not have. Town issued emails, department heads and supervisors are. Providing verbal training and, um, showing them the posters because the posters are also a form of training that we've put in the building. So we have, um, a couple of different kinds of posters that, um. Shelley provided to employees and throughout the building on, um. The workplace safety standards and we also have the employer and employee posters that were distributed by. The, uh, Department of Revenue through Governor's Office that are associated with the workplace safety standards. Uh, two other things that we've done is we have daily contact logs that are a requirement of, um. Reopening and of operating as an essential business. So we, you, we will be using the, um, attendance records for knowing which employees are in each building every day. And then we're also having daily contact logs from each department. When they interface either through a window of handing a document to someone or meet them outside to. Hand off a document. So all physical, um, contact is being traced and documented every day. And they will all be submitted to my office on a weekly basis and I will keep the logs in the event that there is, um, a case. In the building or in one of the buildings of a, uh, COVID nineteen, um. Um, positive case. And then the documents can be provided to Shelley for contact tracing. And the final thing that we're doing, uh, in the buildings is we have, uh, cleaning logs for each building. Uh, which public's, uh, buildings will be keeping track of and the. Logs list what was done each day in each building and, uh. List the time, the date, and who did the cleaning and what type of cleaning was done. In the event, again, if there is an active case. And that is the high level summary for, um, our expansion plan. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Um, it sounds like Mrs. Omahoney's dog really appreciates that as well. Thank you.
God, there's no way to muzzle them.
But, uh, ser- seriously, uh, there's a lot to chew on there. Certainly a lot of detail, uh, went into that. We thank you for that. I think it's important to, to recognize that although we're eager to get back to normal for the residents of our town. It's also important to remember that we're a very large employer. And that we have to make sure we take care of our employees. And it sounds like you have a very detailed plan to make sure we can protect our employees. I, as well. And so, uh, I know that this will be a lot of, uh. A lot for your office to take on, uh, a lot of work for folks like public buildings and DPW to take on. Uh, but I know that you folks are certainly up to the task. And so, uh, we really appreciate this presentation. But I know that you folks are certainly up to the task. And so we really appreciate this presentation. This, before I open it up to folks, Carrie, this detailed plan, we're going to make that available to folks so that they can access it and see it?
The, the plan is really the checklist. So the details. Provide more details to you on the checklist plan if, if you want them. Yes.
Because I just think it, it was brought up earlier by someone, forgive me who, but you know, there's a lot of, I think maybe Mr. Kyra may ask the question and it's a great question. It's just, there's so many things happening and even as someone who tries to really pay attention to everything going on. There's so many different phases and deadlines and dates and, and what's allowed in this phase and what's not allowed in that phase. And it's just a lot to digest. So I think whatever we can do to make sure we continue to put out information to the community so that residents are informed and they know what's going on on a given day, given week really go a long way. Cause I think people just really are having a lot of questions right now. You know, what can I, what can I not do yet? And I think I really appreciate you being willing to answer those questions if they have them and we'll make all the information we can available.
Sure. We can even provide the, the email language and the links so that people are able to look at the videos themselves if they want to know, how should I be cleaning my hands? Or what can I use for a face mask? So we'll be glad to do that.
And we're glad to hear that everybody's back to work and providing service to the town. So let's open it up for folks who have comments or questions, if that's okay, Carrie?
Sure.
Start with Mr. Kyra.
Sure. Carrie, thank you for the presentation. It was very, very well detailed for sure. Now, thi- this is presentation and what you've shown us here, this is for all of the employees in the town of Wilmington, correct?
Yes, I shared it with the school today and they took my email and just made a couple of tweaks and put their contact information on it. And it's been distributed to school employees also and the posters have gone up in the schools. We're working hand in hand, but we're really it's a, it's as, the town is taking the lead because it's the town of Wilmington. So the school is included in our plan.
Yeah. And, and I know, you know, I worked for a town as well, a city and they, they have the same type of plan. I know their process was to have a, a seminar for each, for each employee in the city that they would meet at City Hall. And the fire department put on the seminar. But one of the things they did, and I didn't hear if we're doing it or not, and I, I guess it just may all depend upon the city of town. Is when we go into the city building and it's still closed to the public and it says until June first, but that I guess is probably to be determined as well. Based upon what the governor says. We have to take our own temperature in, in order to, to continue to work for the day. And then we have to answer ten questions, either a yes or a no. Is that something that we have or is that just protocol vary from town to town?
It varies from town to town. Part of the training was these are the, the symptoms of COVID and you need to review it every day before you come to work, but we're not taking people's temperature at the workplace.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Mr. Eaton?
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. Ms. Coleman, Diane, thank you very much for all the work that you've put into this. I had a question as to what feedback you've gotten from staff?
Um, I, I think people have looked at the documents. They understand. They know to ask Shelley or I if they have questions. We have had a number of questions, especially about the Family First Coronavirus Response Act that provides for various forms of remuneration if you're unable to work due to being COVID positive or having to quarantine. So a lot of questions about that type of thing. When I sent out the email, it was mandatory that everyone review it and the department heads, I think, are checking in on that also of, to make sure that their employees are watching the videos. It's a lot of repetition, but we just want to get the information out there and make sure that people understand it. And I think Shelley gets questions, more questions than I do from employees who think that they may have been, come in contact with someone. So they deal with Shelley pretty much directly on those type of things.
Shelley, I see you back. You want to add to that? And you're probably a really integral part of this plan as well.
I just want to say that Carrie did such a fabulous job on this plan. I mean, I couldn't have done what she did. It was so, it's just great. And I hope that every business can emulate the plan that we have. It's really a great plan and I just can't thank her enough for putting it together. Cause I don't know how I would have done it if she didn't do it. And it's a good plan and I think that we have good, we have, it's just a good plan and we have the procedures in place and I think it's going to be. It's, it's good. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley.
Yeah, Shelley, thanks for adding that because we know you have really high standards for keeping people healthy. And so if it meets your standard, then I feel better about it. Thank you. Mr. Eaton, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I did not.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'll just be brief. I'd like to thank the Assistant Town Manager. Looks like, you know, we're doing what we need to do and the best thing we can say is we're trying to move forward. And I know the manager and everybody's doing as best they can, the town department heads. And I know Mike Woods and the Department of, Department of Public Works do a good job. But I know I said it before and I know we can just do as much as we can, but it'd be really nice to start getting these roads back in shape. I mean, it's really in rough shape, a lot of these roads in town. And, you know, I know we can only do our best. Wilmington is a huge employer. The town of Wilmington is a huge employer. And I just echo to you and to the Town Manager that I know Jeff said at the last meeting that we're doing what we can. And hopefully it's what phasing these employees back. We just, that should be like one of the priorities is trying to take care of the burn that's got ripped up. But mostly the, the potholes and some of the roads, a lot of it's uneven. It's because of the winter. I get it. You can only do so much and they're doing a great job.
Absolutely, they are. Mrs. Omahoney?
All right. I just want to echo everyone else's thanks, Carrie, for putting all of this together and, and keeping our staff safe. And I think the only question I really have is that the twenty-five percent restriction that they can't no more than twenty-five percent of the staff in a building at any given time. I'm assuming that the, the other seventy-five percent that aren't kind of in the rotation to be physically in the building are still allowed to work remotely?
Yes, absolutely. Some people are working remotely. And in many cases, we have offices within offices. So department heads have offices. So they can be in their office and then we can have a person in outside office. We're also using room nine as an office right now for one of the staff members in the Town Manager's office. We can use a small conference room and we, and in the cases where we have essential services, they can go over the twenty-five percent. And the twenty-five percent really has to be in place by July first, but we're trying our best right now to institute it wherever we can. So we're working on putting up petitions and setting up offices for the future, really. For, for July. But I think we, we work with Shelley all the time to talk about the guidelines. We discuss how many people and Shelley looks at each office and makes a determination along with the building inspector of what we can do. So I think we're, we're really trying to our best to follow the rules. People work from home when they have to, when they're not in the office. But we've set up some other office spaces to make things work so that more people can be in the building.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hall, it sounds like they've got a very strong, detailed plan here. You got to feel good about that. Knowing that your employees are going to be feeling safe as they come back to work.
Yes, I want to again, just credit Carrie for all the work that she's put into pulling this plan together in, in really a short order when you consider that the governor issued his directives on the eighteenth of May. So we're talking a pretty compressed period of time here. Just to speak to one of the points that was raised about testing people in terms of temperatures. And we did have a considerable amount of conversation about that point with council. And ultimately, at least at this point, we have decided not to take that approach for town employees. And then the other question that had come up during our conversations were the prospect of doing that in when we do have residents coming into the buildings. And there are some concerns that were expressed about the ability to, to do that and whether we can bar people from entering a town building if they have a temperature that, for example, might be a hundred and one. One of the challenges obviously is that people have different average temperatures. You know, it certainly doesn't fluctuate that much, but somebody might have a slightly higher temperature. They could have done something before they enter the building that creates a temperature that is above the norm, so to speak. So there's a lot of challenges, I think, that, that go with doing that kind of thing. And then the, the other point being in and of itself, the temperature is only one indicator of a potential problem. Whether it could be COVID or some other type of ailment. So for the moment anyways, we're, we're not engaged in that practice. With regard to other things that we're doing, as was alluded to, George Hooper and his personnel have been installing these essentially windows, if you will, Plexi- Plexiglas windows, almost like you would see in a teller's space. So that when we do reopen to the public, there will be an additional a layer of protection, if you will, for people that come to the various counters in the Town Hall. And, and the same will be done to the extent possible in, in the other buildings. And then I would just want to address the point that Selectman McCoy brought up about potholes. We are actively engaged in pothole repairs, filling potholes. I know in talking to Mike Woods about this after the last meeting, we keep a log of all the calls that we receive from people with notifying us of potholes. Certainly between that and crews out and about, we're actively engaged. And what we typically do this time of the year, which is filling potholes and trying to clean up curbs that have been chipped by snow removal, even though we didn't have a lot of snow this year.
Great. Thank you very much. So Carrie, I know you're probably going to stick with us, but is there anything you wanted to add here as we wrap up this part of the discussion?
Uh, no, I don't think so. I think that the employees are, are really doing their part to follow the requirements. They're wearing their masks, they're social distancing. Of course, as we open up to the public, we'll have another set of requirements that we'll have to discuss and plan for. But right now, I think that everyone is really doing their part to follow the plan that we've outlined.
Great. Thank you again. We really appreciate the plan and thanks so much for making sure that all of our employees remain safe.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our final appointment. Tonight, we're going to welcome in a host of people. We, we have our Town Clerk Tina Conway's on the line with us. We're gonna, I know Town Council with us, Jonathan Silverstein's on the line, I believe. And also we have the hardest working man in show business, our Town Moderator's here, Attorney Robert Peterson, Jr. Rob, I can hear my three-year-old refusing to go to bed upstairs. How are you doing over there?
I'm getting some pretty threatening texts, Greg, but I'm, I'm, I'm here nonetheless. Apparently my wife's tackling two kids and two dogs and none of them are being cooperative. But I am here with you people. So this is, this is actually really where I want to be.
Well, thank you for being with us, all of you, as we take on this next appointment, which is a discussion regarding the location of our annual town meeting. Obviously, the, with all the challenges that we're facing, you can imagine the challenges come across when trying to plan a very large meeting. And so thankfully, our Town Moderator has been working diligently over the last couple of weeks. Trying to keep a pulse on what all the communities, the Commonwealth are doing. He'll probably mention it, but he's on a big group chain with all of the moderators and there's a lot of unique things going. But I think we have a solid plan. I also want to welcome in, I think he's on the line, is our, the Chairman of the Finance Committee, John Gardy is with us. And we'll give you the opportunity to say hello. But he's been on conference calls that we've been having weekly to try to make sure that we can have not only an election that's coming up, but a very, very important town meeting, all while keeping everybody safe. So Mr. Moderator, you want to open up the discussion for us?
Uh, yeah. First of all, thank you for having me. As you said, I've, we've been having a plethora of conversations relative to how we're going to move forward with the town meeting. What it's going to look like, what it's not going to look like. I can tell you the, with one certainty, it won't, it won't look or feel like any other town meeting we've had ever. But we're endeavoring to, to make our town meeting as accessible as humanly possible, accessible as it always is. And we're trying to figure out the best formula by which we can have a town meeting and keep everybody safe while doing so. A couple of things, I have some notes here I want to address that we've been, a couple of things we've been talking about. And just to go over it for the folks looking at home, I know that we're sitting here having a quote unquote virtual meeting via Zoom. However, because we're an open town meeting, there is no legal framework for conducting a virtual town meeting for those towns that have an open town meeting process. There is pending legislation relative to representative town meetings. But there's going to be nothing dealing with open town meetings. And from my discussions with other moderators and with folks over on Beacon Hill, it just, it doesn't seem like that's going to be likely forthcoming in my own two senses. I just, it's really seemed practical to me. I don't know how, I don't think the town has the bandwidth to, to support that kind of a meeting anyhow. Relative to what we're doing from a public health standpoint. So the Department of Public Health is actually supposed to be issuing guidance on how to safely conduct a town meeting. But to date, they haven't released that. And the Mass Moderator Association has requested some clarification on various issues that myself and other moderators have raised throughout these, as the chairman had mentioned, we have a, it's actually, it's a Google group which we talk about stuff going on in our various towns. And it's actually, I, I found to be invaluable in the past, and especially during these times to address questions and concerns I have that, that would more so translate to the town. And if I have the questions, I'm sure there are a bunch of the people out there who would have them. So basically, kind of how we've been proceeding relative to, you know, if or, if or when you have an annual town meeting. It's going to be whenever we do have this meeting, as Shelley had intimated earlier. This, this, this virus, this, this issue that we're dealing with now isn't likely to go away in the immediate future. So we will be having a town meeting and right now that's slated for June twenty-seventh. It's going to be, it's going to be a personal decision for, for every citizen out there, every voter out there and whether or not they want to attend our twenty-twenty annual town meeting. It's just our obligation to ensure we provide the safest, safest environment possible. And a plan, put a pen, put a plan in place that will be reasonably crafted with advice from the folks who've been on our telephone calls and especially Shelley and other public health, public health officials. It's a, it's a plan of mine as we move forward within the weeks leading up to our annual town meeting that we're going to have a memorandum published. It's going to be available after reviewed by all the requisite parties. So people out there are going to be fully apprised on what town meeting is going to look like, what the procedures are going to be, what you're going to be required to do and how you're going to be expected to conduct yourself and operate at the meeting. That being said, over the past, you know, week and a half, probably two weeks, week and a half, we had been talking about trying to hold our annual town meeting in a modified version inside the confines of high school. However, after, you know, consulting with other town moderators, consulting with the Police Chief, Fire Chief, Shelley, Mr. Bendel, and also in doing some reading, much more reading than I would ever want to read on the subject online. It seems to be, it seems to note that public officials are in accord that outdoor locations are safer than indoor locations, that being because you're not confining as many people into one space indoors. And the, the risk of public health exposure for this virus obviously is exposure over time. So if you can limit the exposure by being in an, an open, open space, it's obviously better off for, for the constituency or the makeup of that meeting. And something I, too, I wanted to address that I, I forgot to take up at the beginning of this is the, an open town meeting, as an open town meeting, we're a legislative body of the, of the town of Wilmington. So we're exempt from any, any of the town of Wilmington, so we're exempt from any, any limits on gathering. So we're completely exempt. So someone said, well, how do you have it if there's a limit on gatherings? As the legislative body of the town, we're actually exempt from any of those requirements. So which is why we've been trying to put some sort of plan together for a meeting that will keep our citizens as safe as humanly possible. So we have discussed it. It was my recommendation after, again, consulting with other town moderators in other towns, that we procure or we move forward with suggesting that this meeting be held outdoors and more so to guard against any weather or inclement weather we might have, that the town look into possibly getting some sort of tent to house that, to house that meeting. So we, there have been discussions relative to the same, you know, pending approval of the Selectmen if it's night at a later date of moving forward with having the town meeting at an outdoor location. Again, a couple more things I just want to address before we open the discussion up. The length of town meeting, obviously, the quicker or the shorter of a town meeting we have, it's going to lessen the public health risk because obviously it's exposure over time. So we're going to be looking to be doing some things that might look a little different, but are well within the rules of order and within laws, bylaws, et cetera. One of those things that we'll be looking into doing is going to be a consent calendar, as Robert's Rules of Order calls it, or a consent agenda, as it is routinely known by people who have these meetings. Basically, just trying to get things that the town manager and the Board of Selectmen buy into the chair, might see to be, might deem to be maybe less controversial, or some of those articles you see at a regular town meeting that vote with, that go past with little or no discussion, if you can lump all those into a consent agenda or a consent calendar. It's just another way of moving the meeting along. We'll be also taking a look at other ways we can, we can move a meeting along. And by, when I say move a meeting along, it's not to limit or to discourage discussion, but it's more so to streamline that process so we can have, we can have a meeting that addresses all the concerns and issues within the four corners of our warrant. And then we have a, we give folks the opportunity to ask questions relative to the same. Relative to that, if we want to, I just got a quick little message here. If you want to pull up the GIS map, I can show everyone here and the folks at home where we're proposing to have that, the town meeting. If you're looking at this GIS map here, the white building in the forefront is the high school, you'll see the football field. And then there's that softball field over here, and the red outline is where, after some discussions, and again, pending approval by the board, that we would, we would place a tent to host our annual, 2020 annual town meeting on June 27. That's just so everyone kind of gets a feeling for what we, what we had discussed. Again, moving on, a couple more points relative to the meeting. Advanced preparation is going to be more advanced preparation than we've had for any town meeting in the past. We're going to have to have proper signage. There's going to be proper spacing on chairs. We're going to have a six-foot radius on chairs, whether it be in the high school or hopefully on the, on an outdoor venue. And then we're going to have to control ingress and egress, leading to and from the meeting. And I had to address this on our call the other day, want to make sure there's no bottlenecking. So when you're coming to and leaving the meeting, it will be very heavily regulated to how you're going to go about getting in. And then what we're going to do when, when the final, the gavel, when we gavel out of the meeting and the meeting would be over. And again, all of this information, as we move forward, is going to be posted. We're going to hopefully have it posted to the town's website sooner rather than later. But it's just some of the things, you know, we've been discussing. And then there will be a memorandum forthcoming. And then just, there's a plethora of other things on there, but we don't need to get into that right now.
So Rob, I wasn't kidding when I said that you've been pretty busy. Obviously, we really appreciate you keeping up on all the latest legislation and what's going on with other communities so we can find the safest way. I'm going to come back to you if that's okay, but
Yeah.
certainly want to give Tina the opportunity to chime in because Tina, this is going to be a logistical challenge for your office. And I know, I feel a lot comfortable having heard some of the detail that you've thought of. And I also want to give a shout out to George Hooper because he's been very influential in this process as well. But Tina, maybe you want to chime in on some of the logistical things, the things you're thinking about from your perspective.
So first and foremost, the use of poll pads will be even better in this kind of because we can spread them out more and keep lines separated, keep people in the line. I don't know how big a turnout will have, but it certainly will be if people checked in the poll pads. This confluence of
Hard to hear her, Chairman Bendel. I don't know if there's an issue with her.
Tina, so we're cutting in and out of there for a second. Do you mind repeating that or just?
Sure. Is that better? I don't know. Maybe my internet connection isn't good, but it looks okay from here. Hello?
Yep, you just, just cut out a little bit. Go ahead and give it a try.
So using the poll pads this year is, is very gratuitous because I think that it's going to enable us to move the line much quicker. And we're going to need to ensure that people can't get in and out of the tents, the tent, once, once they're in, that they can't, you know, people don't, won't have access to go in outside of being allowed in by us. Instead of wearing lanyards, which is what the voters usually do, we're probably going to give them a card of some particular color. And so to vote, they'll just hold the card up so they can be counted that way. Then that will probably, that will certainly keep us from having to have any kind of face-to-face contact or handing stuff back and forth. I definitely think that we, because we're not sure about whether we're going to be able to put the warrant articles up on the screen, we're going to have to print out some copies of the warrant so that people will have them and also encourage people to print out copies for themselves. So I envision putting a lot more people on to work, just to kind of keep control and and be able to more quickly move things along if we have to take a standing vote. And I just, I, you know, knowing exactly where it's going to be, I can't really tell you the plan, except to know that we'll have plenty of people now. Our call out, our shout out for workers has been pretty successful. We've had about 25 people come forward offering to work for us that are, many are young, young students, 18 years old, even 16 and 17-year-olds. I don't know if we can use those people for the town meeting, but certainly we can use them for the election and but many adults, younger adults, younger people have stepped forward and said that they'd be more than happy to help us get through this time period. So I, I can't tell you the plan, we have a plan, but I promise you that the plan will be thought out and efficient.
No doubt about it. We have the utmost confidence in you. And it's glad, I'm glad to hear that there are a lot of people stepping up to help out.
They have. It's been, it's been really nice.
And another committee that's going to be, it's a really big day for the Finance Committee. They've been working really hard since the wintertime. And John Doherty's been on these conference calls with us and had some great insight. I mean, we've covered everything from talking about approaching a microphone, sharing a microphone, to actually using the bathrooms. So we've covered a lot of different things. John's had some great insight. John, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, sir. How are you doing tonight?
Good, John. How are you? Just wanted to give you an opportunity to say hello and add anything you might want to bring to the conversation.
Want to say hello, but I also want to bring up the public hearing, which will be on June 9. And when, in consultation with council and town manager, we're going to be having a start of a town, town public hearing at the high school. And it'll be immediately suspended and go to a virtual town meeting starting at seven, town public hearing starting at 7:30.
Yeah, great. Thank you for bringing that up, John. That's, that's really important. Obviously, this is a series of events that are rolling together.
The other thing is the, the town warrant will be available online. And the Finance Committee will not be issuing its recommendations by mail. Those recommendations will be made online as well.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Things are going to be obviously a little bit different. So as soon as we have things that are definite, we'll be putting it out to folks. But absolutely, John is correct that we'll have that stuff available online. So John, if you don't mind sticking around for a minute, we'll keep you
Not a problem.
Thank you. And so to my colleagues on the board, we have a whole host of people here. I know there's a lot of maybe questions, comments. We have the moderator here, we have the clerk and the finance chair, and also Town Council's on the line. Thank you to Mr. Silverstein for being on the line. So let's open it up. And we have Mr. Kyra. We'll start with you. Do you have questions, comments?
Mr. Bendel, thank you. I do appreciate the amount of work and effort that's gone in over the past several weeks with this committee in trying to address town meeting. Just a couple of questions, I guess I have is, to the town moderator, Robbie, you're looking to have a budget-only town meeting this year and taking the other articles up later so that, you mentioned you don't want to stay and have a meeting at a significant length. So would that mean splitting it up? Budget?
Yeah, so right now, I had watched a previous meeting to this board and it didn't seem like there was an appetite. I believe it was Mr. Eaton who had mentioned that, correct me if I'm wrong, Jonathan, I think you had mentioned not having an appetite, given the the legislation that was enacted to either, to reduce the quorum and take up only a limited amount of of articles, that being the budget, or, or simply keeping the quorum and moving forward with a bifurcated meeting, whereas we would act only on the budget and thereafter take up warrant articles. But to date, we have not discussed any, any limiting of the, of the warrant other than I can tell you that there was discussion, I had exchanged various emails with the town moderator from the town of Chatham. And a quick, quick tidbit of information, Chatham has the oldest average population, third oldest population in the state. Chatham, like Wilmington, is debating a new, they call theirs the Council on Aging. We, ours will be a senior center. They have that up on their annual town warrant. And as I was going back and forth with their moderator, Mr. Litchfield, he had mentioned that their Board of Selectmen in consultation with him had made the decision that they are actually not going to entertain any motion relative to their Council on Aging, which is their senior center at the town meeting, other than a motion to postpone that meeting to a date certain, which is September 19, and they will be calling a special town meeting for the sole purpose of taking up that. He mentioned that there was also other articles being taken up at that meeting as well, although he didn't enumerate them, certainly follow up with what they're thinking. But at this time, the only discussion we had relative to limiting our warrant, which would, again, only be it would not, it's not within my purview to limit the, what's taken up at the meeting, but rather I can simply act on the motions that are put forth through the meeting itself. But that was a discussion that we had relative to how to best handle the subject matter for our annual town meeting coming up. But other than that meeting, other than that discussion relative to the senior center, we did not, there has been no discussion relative to further limiting it. I'm open to any discussion that the board might want to have. But it would seem like if we're going to have, have an annual town meeting, which is now scheduled for June 27, and again, the biggest driving force between having that meeting would be to ensure we have a budget moving forward. And also, as had been discussed numerous times on these calls, you know, we, we're not, just not really sure further delaying it, what, what's going to happen because we don't seem to have any solid evidence as to when this is quote-unquote going to be over or when this is going to be, when, when a better time will be to have a meeting such as an annual town meeting in Wilmington.
We also have a, we also have not only the senior center, but we have a feasibility study for a new town hall and and at, and school admin building as well, that would be taken up at town meeting.
Yep, and that was, and that is something that was further further flushed out because that would tie into a senior center as well. Because, I mean, we're talking about town properties and there, there, those were, are kind of, whether it be tangentially related, but they are related on some sort of ground. So it might be, it might be worth it to, to lump that or those articles if the, the board maybe decided to, to postpone all those articles until a special town meeting, which again, would have to be set by the board. And it would just be my, my advice, and again, after reading all the literature I'm getting from the Mass Moderator Association and going back and forth on emails, whatever we decide to do, we just have to make sure myself, town manager, Board of Selectmen, that we're relaying this information explicitly to our, to our citizens and making sure that everyone's apprised of, you know, how we're handling it moving forward. Because as, as I read an article about half an hour before jumping on this call, you know, communication in times like this is going to be key. So whatever decisions we make, we got to make sure we're communicating it once and we're also in constant communication thereafter as to how we're going to handle this. So it lacks confusion. We're also upholding the legitimacy of our, our town's legislative body.
Greg, we also have another item is trash and recycling that comes up July 1. And Jeff can probably speak better to it than I can, but that's a contract that we actually need.
Yes, there are certainly, one of the reasons, quite frankly, that I'm anxious to conclude as much of the town meeting warrant as we can on the 27th is that in the event that we're not able to go forward on the 27th, for whatever reason, either we can't muster a quorum or there are other circumstances that don't allow us to have that, then we go into this 1/12 budget mode, or at least 1/12. It certainly can be more than 1/12, but more than 1/12 of the current year's budget, but it is exclusive of warrant articles, the articles that are typically capital-related. So there's two particular articles that are of particular consequence here, one being an article to authorize a five-year contract with Wheelabrader, who is the disposal facility up in North Andover that takes our trash. The other is to authorize a contract, a five-year contract with Casella, who is the vendor slated to take care of the recycling, curbside recycling and curbside trash collection. So the existing contracts in both instances expire at the end of this fiscal year. I've had some conversations with Mark Rich about how to work around that in the event that we're not able to have the meeting on the 27th. But the best scenario would be to have the meeting and, and cover those particular items.
Thank you. I want, I want to get back to Mr. Kyra. I know
Yes.
More comments?
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. Just in reading town manager's Halls memo to us, it mentions, this may be more of a question for Hooper than, than you, Mr. Peterson. He's, looks like we've secured a tent that accommodates 300 people. Now, is that tent accommodating 300 people six feet apart?
That's correct, that's correct. Yeah, it's, it's accommodating. And again, George would be able to speak more explicitly to this. But from my conversations with George, the tent with the 300 seats fits that at, if you put in the proper social distancing guidelines.
Right. And also, the tent, I would imagine it's for shade for, from the sun because it's going to be in June and it's probably going to be in the eighties, I would imagine. And hopefully not raining, but it's also for the inclement weather in case it rains, correct? Is there going to be, and we know that rain doesn't come straight down, it comes sideways. Is there going to be, uh and we know that rain doesn't come straight down, it comes sideways and swirls around and everything else. So are there gonna be sides to the tent?
Yeah, so actually, this was brought up, um and we're we're uh we're hoping and praying uh again, we're uh this is a uh a time uh that that we haven't had to deal with before. We're we're hoping for good weather. Uh but relative to putting sides in a tent, uh I believe that it was the common consensus of our discussion last Wednesday uh that that probably would defeat the purpose of having the tent and keeping the 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 open air. Uh so while we discuss that and we hope we won't need it, um there there, I believe it would come equipped as how we left it, and again, I'll have to have George, you know, come back with that solid information, but I I don't think that putting sides on the tent and restricting the airflow is gonna be uh from a public health perspective, uh is gonna be the the best, the best solution. So uh oh oh while we'll have a tent to shade us from uh the sun and hopefully guard against um inclement weather in the form of rain, uh we're not, I I just don't envision a scenario, whereas if the rain's coming down, it's such a force uh that we'll be throwing sides up and kinda defeating the purpose of actually getting the tent and and kind of allowing the airflow from side to side.
Right, I I agree with you, and that was the purpose of my my question. It was you, we're defeating the purpose of having an open air if we put up sides. And if we put up sides, then why not have it uh at the high school and spread it out over the auditorium, the cafeteria, or in the in the gymnasium? Um you know, but obviously, the best thing according to all um health issues is to have it outside, and that was my concern. If you're going to put up sides, then I think you would better off just having it uh at the high school where there is uh air conditioning um and and better accommodations for people to, that have to use a restroom. Um. Let me see here. Um the location, and I looked at the location and I really have difficulty with with it. Um I I don't know that I could support that location. And I'll tell you why. Um yeah, I think people would have to walk a country mile uh to get there. Um and looking at it when it was put up on the screen and knowing where it is, there's only about fifteen or sixteen spaces that are adjacent to it. And then you have um the Wildwood Cemetery. We certainly wouldn't want a a lot of people parking in the Wildwood Cemetery and just walking across the street. So I have concerns about it being at the softball field at the high school. Uh first, because of the parking, people will be parking over at the Swain School, the high school, and like I said, they'd be walking great distance uh just to get there. Uh my second concern is bathrooms. Uh I'm sure that you've considered porta-potties, uh probably not the best that people want to uh use. Um I don't know the logistics about a sound system and how far um um wiring has to be brought in from there. Um but I I've been thinking two or different locations, as I'm sure you've already vetted, you know, the Swain Green and uh or even the the high school football field, a Yentile field, the the artificial turf. I'm I'm sure we don't want to put chairs on there that will cause indentations to the turf. Uh we don't want people up in the stands to go up and down in case they fall and um it's all about location. So uh I'd like for uh us to consider uh the middle school as a location uh for the town meeting. And I look at the middle school, um and I I liken it to baseball. If you, it it would be in uh left and center field at the middle school. And it would be fairly close to the uh middle school building where you can use that uh for people to use uh bathrooms. And as for parking, uh there are plenty of parking spots um all around there. We have three schools that can be utilized. Um I I I would venture to say that the sound system hookup might be here coming off of the school. Um but I I would like for you for for that middle school location. And and the other thing too is is probably that you're not gonna get a lot of traffic noise over there, uh because it's, you know, it's all school area. So that might be a a place to consider uh having the town meeting if you have to have it outside.
Uh yeah, uh Kevin, thanks for bringing all those up and 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 just uh to first put out there, the the meeting location, uh I kinda had very little, if not no, uh no input on that. I I I left that up to uh Mr. Hooper uh in consultation with uh especially if uh Mr. Biddle was on that call too. It was our fire chief uh uh and it was for public safety reasons who had chosen uh the location that we ended up coming up with. Uh and number one, the parking, um we had talked about that on our meeting, and I'm going off of memory here, uh and we talked about reserving uh the the lot next to uh that that small lot for some handicap parking. Uh and then I also believe uh Mr. Doherty had the the idea of perhaps using the uh the cemetery uh for additional uh uh handicap or 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 parking for those who would need assistance in getting to and from. Uh so we did uh kinda bring up parking and uh actually, I believe the term country mile was used. Uh we were talking about getting to and from that um that location, uh and it was uh it was vetted out that you know, if you're parking in in the high school parking lot, or if you one of the unfortunate few walking across, you're still kinda walking down, and it's just a further jaunt past the auditorium, you know, back out to that. So while not ideal, uh I believe it was the consensus of those making that decision uh that it it would, the the walk wouldn't be that much further than the uh than the auditorium and the uh uh in the cafeteria a- area, but although admitting it would be a little further. Uh the bathrooms, uh there are, actually are bathrooms in the fieldhouse, what they plan to use at the high school, uh which is why that was chosen. Uh and I believe uh Chief Kavanaugh said that those were uh the the best equipped for uh access from the location, uh and they were also handicap accessible because we had talked about an ideal location also was going to be uh somewhere like the Shawshin School. Uh but apparently, those bathrooms uh wouldn't meet uh handicap accessible requirements. And uh for as far as audiovisual are concerned, uh they, it came up with the high school being the newest building. Uh they had the best audiovisual uh capabilities, especially because they're gonna be sitting near that fieldhouse and they can, I believe they can connect from the press box. Uh so they kinda, and and to be quite honest, I kinda sat uh sat back because that's not really my uh my forte or or my area. I I just kinda suggested that we we bring forth the idea of an outdoor meeting uh and then Mr. Hooper, uh and again, uh the fire chief, uh were taught, were the ones to really talking about nailing down a location. We we did discuss other areas. And at the end of that discussion, uh it was uh they they, between the two of them, thought that logistically, it was easiest or or best suited for that location. However, it's kinda why I'm here tonight, because it's really uh, it's gonna be up to uh the selectmen where where you guys want to have it. Um so I can just, just trying to give you as as mu- much information as I have relative to your questions.
Kavanaugh, I know you're with us and you like this place from a public safety standpoint. You want to chime in here on this particular location?
Sure. So uh, Mr. Kyra, we did have a a number of different locations that come up, one being the the Glen Road Field. Um you know, that was ruled out to the parking uh down there. That's not a good spot. Um we did bring up a couple of other schools. One of the issues we want to keep away from with the schools is a, you know, twofold really. One, from a security standpoint, we don't want people just wandering around the schools and the way both those schools turn up, we can't really cordon off just the bathroom area. So we would kinda be opening the schools up to kinda anyone to wander around if they felt like it. Uh the high school to use the bathrooms there is is kind of in the same um the same realm. Uh also, we gotta remember, we're we're doing this in June. These schools are gonna be in uh different phases of um basically dismantlement where the public buildings group is gonna be tearing these things apart, trying to get them ready, uh hopefully for August for the the kids to return. So uh this location, again, we did talk about the the walk is inconvenient for some people. Uh however, it it would cover um most of the handicap parking. There's fourteen spots in that lot just adjacent. We do have some parking across um at the cemetery, which again, we don't want to use a lot of. We also have that big lot behind Nichols Funeral Home and the library lot. So those two bring people closer than just the high school or across the Swain Green as well. Uh in the bathrooms, again, uh like the moderator alluded to, they're um they're climate controlled, they're handicap accessible, and then it it keeps our public buildings group only having to clean up one thing, as opposed to having to go around and potentially having to clean a whole section of a building again because we don't know where people went.
Mr. Kyra, do you want to follow up with that?
Yeah, it was, it was hard to understand, um Chief Kavanaugh, I was going in and out, but I think he said something about people wandering around the the buildings or something. I I, we we always had town meeting in a building, so I don't know how many people would wander around a building, but that's neither here nor there. Um I think the, have, what what other places have been vetted um for this uh for the town meeting?
So clearly, the places that were discussed, Shawshin School, uh the the soccer fields, uh the Swain Green, I think there was, and correct me if I'm wrong, others who were on the call, but I think there would be challenges there with uh getting uh the uh sound system and possibly uh the ability for uh, well, yeah, sounds.
Where is this, Jeff?
At the Swain Green.
Yep.
Uh you know, I threw out the possibility of even the town common, not knowing uh offhand whether that would accommodate uh a tent of this size, but you know, with the idea that it's proximate to the high school and restrooms, proximate to um uh the July fourth building for restrooms. Um I I don't recall, quite frankly, that we talked about uh the prospect of uh uh of holding this over at the uh fields behind the middle school. I I I I don't recall that uh location coming up.
Okay. Yeah, I I would think having it um probably on town, um the town common or even the Swain school green site area, traffic would be an issue with people driving by and
Right.
honking their horns, wondering what the heck is going on. Uh I would like uh for uh for us to look at the uh middle school. Uh I understand the concerns about um opening up an area and then having to go back in and clean it. Uh this would be in June. Schools aren't opening up until August. We're talking about uh confining people to a certain area if they need to use the bathrooms. Uh I think it could be cleaned in plenty of time. Um I I just think that that's, logistically, that's a, that's a better spot for people. Uh my, my real concern i- is the parking, and I don't want people parking over the cemetery. Uh even if it's for handicap, I I don't think it's appropriate that we do that. Uh we only have about fifteen or sixteen spots adjacent to the softball field. And we're, it it's a, hey, it's a long walk for me. It's gonna be a long walk for a lot of people. Uh but I'll do it because I have to do it, and uh I I just, I just don't see it. People coming from um the Swain School or the Fourth of July parking lot or the high school parking lot, all the way down to that softball field. Uh I, call me crazy, I don't know, but uh right now, if I were to vote, uh I'm not voting for it. And I know that the selectmen are the ones that select this uh the the location. Uh and if you were looking for a motion tonight, uh I'd be prepared to put it at the middle school, but I'll wait to hear from from uh George uh and and get his advice. And and also, you, uh Chief Kavanaugh, to, so you can look at it. As, as Tom Manager said, no one's given that place a thought over there. And 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 maybe ultimately, that might be the spot. Maybe ultimately, it may not be, but I would like it looked at um just, just, just to see what um if that would make more sense.
All right. So, Mr. Kyra, if it's okay with you, I want to hear from the other selectmen, and then perhaps we can come back to you if you'd like to uh make a motion or add more discussion, if that's okay? Mr. Eaton?
Oh yes, thank you. I I do want to uh thank uh Mr. Peterson, uh Town Council, uh Mr. McConley and and Mr. Doherty and everybody else that's been a part of that discussion, uh presuming Mr. Ho as well. I just uh to attempt to try and clarify the comments of Mr. Peterson attributed to me, I I I'm not uh as a rule opposed to a one-twelfth budget. Uh I, it is certainly my preference that we honor the uh town meeting as the legislative body of this town, which, again, I understand that we might not be able to have a town meeting on June twenty-seventh. And I I uh think back to to John Locke and the the three first purposes of government, preservation of life, liberty, and property. And if we can't have a town meeting that's safe and uh facilitates the preservation of life, then what we need to make do, and if a one-twelfth budget is the way to go, then that's the way to go. It's just certainly my uh preference that we don't have to get to that point, understanding the circumstances might dictate otherwise. Uh I I I do agree with a lot of the concern that Mr. Kyra has made about the location of it. Um I I had not thought about the middle school myself. Um I look just at areas that are closer to parking at the town hall site, and I see the baseball field is right next to the main parking lot. It's a little bit further, maybe about the same distance or walk to the fieldhouse for the bathroom, if that's a word um required to use. The uh football field and track, I understand that that's field turf and that needs to be protected, so we can't just be sticking holes in the ground to put up a fence, but uh and perhaps, and I don't mean to put you on the stop uh spot, Mr. Peterson, but as a fellow alum of Boston Prep, I know they're having a backglow at Mass in lieu of a graduation on their field turf football field uh in a few weeks. So I I know they're putting down plywood on top of it. I don't know if that's a an option. That might be a um question for Mr. Hooper, but uh or Mr. Woods, actually, but uh my my preference is to avoid the situation where we're having people in what could potentially be a uh very hot day as we, near the end of June, uh parking at either the high school or across the common and then trucking themselves all the way to uh to the softball field and then having to go back and forth to the bathroom several times because town meeting doesn't doesn't, it's not usually a forty-five minute meeting. Um the other question I I had, uh and Mr. Doherty had uh made some uh reference to not sending out uh the uh recommendation letter from the Chair of the um Finance Committee, which usually is, I think, the one of the first pages in the booklet, the warrant booklet that gets mailed out to everyone. Uh are we going to be mailing out a booklet, or is it just gonna be available online? Maybe printed copies available at town meeting?
Uh so there will not be uh a a booklet mailed out just because uh we will not have time
Yeah.
uh between the time that the Finance Committee uh convenes to make its recommendations. That information then comes back to uh my office, has to be uh pulled pulled together in terms of the um
Yeah.
warrant and then sent off to the printer. Uh all of those things, uh you know, as you know, the regular schedule is that the Finance Committee meets in March uh for the joint meeting with the Planning Board. Two days later, they can, they uh convene to have their discussion about their recommendations and then schedule proceeds from there, and we're able to get the books in the mail uh in uh uh shortly thereafter, so that people have them prior to the the meeting, but the time is too compressed at this point to to do that.
Understood. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Eaton, can I, can I just uh make a point to a couple of things you would ask about with the tent on the turf?
Please.
Uh, two things. It, George did ask if um if we could do it on the field turf and the company themselves highly discouraged us from doing so. Uh they they didn't feel as though it would be, uh uh they they wouldn't basically guarantee that it wouldn't uh damage the turf. Uh the other thing with the turf is if you bend out on a turf field on a hot day.
Yeah.
Typically, somewhere around thirty degrees hotter than if you're running grass, so that that's just one of those things. And again, we, I know the walk is is long. We do have parking behind the library that that between the library lot, the bookstore and that lot behind uh Nichols Funeral Home, I would accommodate somewhere around sixty, seventy cars anyway, so shorten the walk, stop.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, I just make a couple of quick comments. I was writing down some notes when we were talking about the location right across the uh cemetery. Obviously, Mr. Kyra raised a lot of good points. I was gonna say, if you're a handicap, where are you gonna park? How far is the walking distance from the parking lot at the high school to the uh softball field? And it just seems like right now, there's really a lot of unknown at this point. I mean, I don't have any definitive answers. I'm relying on the manager or or. I mean, I don't have any definitive answers. I'm relying on the manager or or George Hooper come up with an idea where we could uh put the facility uh at that moment. I I know the uh, you know, and the chief uh Fight Chief was just that if you put it on the uh turf, it could be thirty degrees hotter. I mean, we live in New England. June, it could be ninety-five, hot, easy and humid that day. It could be sixty. We don't know, you know, uh this and and I understand, this is some trying times. I get that. A couple of other things were mentioned. Maybe you take up the budget and then maybe uh take up warrant articles at another time. There's that possibility. I know the Board of Selectmen have the authority to, you know, obviously for the meeting and where to call it. I get that. But it's just very difficult at this time. I don't have any solid answers. Uh, I mean, just talking about what the manager just said a moment ago, that we may not even have a meeting on the twenty seventh and we might or we just do the budget, the one twelfth. I mean, it's just a really lot of unknown factors. Uh, do we separate the two? Do we have a town meeting coming up and take care of all the budget need? And then put off maybe to a special town meeting or another meeting where we're gonna take up warrant articles? I mean, I mean, I'm all ears. I I mean, I just gonna kick that around with everybody. Maybe Town Council could talk upon that if you can separate the two or you can.
Jonathan, did you want to jump in there? Question came up about separating different articles from the warrant?
Well, town meeting can certainly separate articles. Um you could separate it into separate days. Uh if you're talking about um just wanting to do it in separate sessions, town meeting, because you have a bylaw that that governs the order in which uh articles would have to be addressed. If you're talking about not indefinitely postponing these articles and taking them up at a special town meeting. Uh if you're talking about just doing it in another, like adjourned session of the town meeting, then you would need town meeting uh to vote at the outset when you open it up uh to do that. But certainly there are procedural ways to to accomplish that, if if that's something that the board wanted to um to do.
So if I could just jump in, I'm what I'm hearing is that it's up to the Board of Selectmen. You're saying that we if we do call for a special town meeting and we do talk about the budget, then what is it? I assume that we could go to the annual town meeting if it's June twenty seventh or whatever day? And then what kind of memorialize that meeting from the Board of the Board of Selectmen memorialize that meeting for a future special town meeting for warrant articles that we're talking about?
Well, since your warrant is already um posted, you you can't take those articles off, right? So the way that you could deal with it would be to uh propose to town meeting, recommend to town meeting that certain articles not be dealt with, that you just deal with priority articles now. And that you could then do one of two things. You could adjourn the annual town meeting to a date certain in the future to deal with the articles that you decided not to take up hundred and twenty-seven, or you could just basically uh take no action on those articles at the annual town meeting. Close the annual town meeting and then schedule a special at some point in the future to deal with everything that you decided not to address at the annual.
All right, so that's an option as well.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, and and just and Mike, just to jump in really quick to that uh to that point. Uh I was talking earlier about other towns and what what we're seeing over there and um and and especially in the case of Chatham, talking about the specific articles to which they were seeking a special town meeting on September nineteenth. Uh it is going to be there. Um it's going to be there. How they're gonna operate that is they're only gonna entertain that motion at the beginning of town meeting that these specific articles, whatever they shall be numbered, uh will be uh shall be postponed uh to a time certain, uh which is gonna be September nineteenth to take those up at a special town meeting as set by the Board of Selectmen. So in in talking and going through all this, you know, back and forth with just about everyone I've been speaking with over the past month and a half. That all like and and like Jonathan just said, that stuff is all attainable and that that stuff can all be done, but it's all about making sure you communicate it to your community so people aren't, you know, showing up or not showing up, or there's confusion relative to what the procedure is. So it's basically, it's going, it's finding the procedure, going by the procedure and making sure you get that out to the public so they can understand it in the best way possible.
Mr. McCoy, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
I can reserve a little bit later, but I uh I'm all ears. Um it's obviously it's different. It's different. Thank you, Mr. Kinnaman.
Thank you. Mrs. Omahoney?
Sure, I guess, can can we put up the the picture of the proposal again?
Go ahead, John. Thank you.
Is is there some reason why we couldn't use the outfield of the baseball field?
Yeah, I don't uh believe so. I think we had talked about that before and for those on the call room, uh jump in here. I I don't recall why.
Issue, the issue with the baseball field was again with the bathrooms. Um the softball fields gave access to those field house bathrooms that um I believe Chief Kavanaugh thought was um really important to this meeting.
Cause I'm just looking at the picture, right? And I'm trying to figure out people who have, you know, a a difficult time walking, it it's it's a long walk, whereas the baseball field, you could make the the high school parking lot, that the staff parking lot, basically the priority parking or the handicap parking for people who can't walk from the student parking lot into the building. It's not, it wouldn't really change the amount of walking they would have to do going to the auditorium um in previous years. My concern with middle school proposal is the reality is, is that parking's all chopped up. So it's the same thing where if you're not getting those, you know, twelve parking spaces to the right of the middle school, you're gonna have to walk you know, from across the street, from on the other side of the west. Um, and I I'm trying to just figure out, is there an easier way? Had, you know, you don't want to deal with a golf cart situation where you're taking one person at a time down to the field that can't it and we have three articles that are addressing senior issues, so I I I just, I'm concerned with the current location in that I don't think you're gonna be able to get the parking as close as people would hope. Uh but that would be the same issue, I guess, we'd have at any of the locations. And I understand the bathroom issue. Is it easier um? If we had it at the baseball field and only allowed those bathrooms that are right by the cafeteria and blocked off the rest, access to the rest of the building versus trying to get people all the way back to the softball field from the front parking lots. And do we really think, at the end of the day, we're hoping we get a hundred and fifty people? Unfortunately, this year, we can't encourage people to cobble or to to shuttle in, you know, so it kind of limits the options. And there's that's there's not really a great drop-off location except that small lot on the Wildwood Street side. I'm just trying to think if there's a better way to to place it and address the bathroom issue versus trying to get everyone to that location to begin with.
Thank you. So I think we can all agree, there's a lot of questions here, a lot of good comments have been made. Uh I think we have two separate issues here. And I want to turn to the manager in just a minute. One is the location and number two is uh what is it gonna look like in terms of the articles we take up when we arrive at wherever we are going to arrive? So, Mr. Hall, logistically for this board this evening, I know Mr. Hooper has reserved a tent. Uh what are we looking at it in terms of a timeline, having to make a decision on the location? Uh I think, you know, my opinion is whatever location we decide upon, there's gonna be some challenges. It's not perfect. But uh certainly uh we want to make sure we can come to a consensus. Is there a timeline? Uh, number one, on the location, because we have reserved the tent. Do they need to know where we're putting the tent uh now or we have some time?
Uh, well, the the timing issue is 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 much about uh communicating the information out to the public as it is uh the uh dealing with the vendor. Uh I don't know offhand how long uh George is able to keep this um tent on hold uh at the, one of our prior uh collective discussions here. He had reached out to this particular vendor. I think I may have mentioned this before and the town of Bedford is having their town meeting the same uh day, uh and they were also interested in this tent. It's obviously a fairly large tent, so um it was decided at least to get the tent on on hold, uh you know, to to um to obtain it, because I think they're gonna be challenging to to get these, given other towns pursuing a s- uh similar course. So I can talk to him about how long we have the a tent on hold for, but I think the more pressing uh consideration or equally pressing uh is being able to make a decision on a location uh as soon as possible, so that we can get the information out to the public uh on where the town meeting is going to be held and any of the logistical issues associated with that.
Yeah, this is a fairly large tent, if I recall. It's about a hundred and sixty feet by eighty feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
This is a not your typical birthday party tent. But uh
That's right.
So uh, Eaton, I I know that people may want to go back around and have some questions and some commentary, how are we gonna proceed here? But what I'd like to try to do is maybe uh try to come to cons- uh some consensus about the location before we tackle um, you know, which articles we'll be addressing, which articles we may not, which articles we may postpone. Uh but I think we really need to hammer down a location sooner than rather than later, because like Mr. Hall said, uh we really want to let the public know and we don't meet again until early June. Uh, that would be become a challenge for us just to give ourselves two weeks to let people. But I see Mr. Eaton's hand go up. I'll go back to you, Jonathan.
Oh yeah, thank you, Mr. Benel. Uh so my my question on location is to the level of specificity that we need to post what the location is. I mean, I my preference would be the baseball field at the high school and I know that the uh recommendation is the softball field at the high school. Both at the high school, could we list the address of the high school and uh perhaps do our due diligence between now and our next meeting to figure out if the baseball field is working?
Good question. Anybody want to respond?
I could just jump.
Mr. Benel, um I I too want to take a look at the the middle school, with all due respect in regards to the parking area. Uh there's plenty of parking right across the street uh at the West Intermediate, a little bit down at the Boutwell and then in front of the middle school and in adjacent beside the middle school. And it's a straight walk across, uh whereas the high school uh which is in an enclosure and they're trying to protect uh the diamond itself, because there's been a lot of money put into that field and we certainly don't want it disrupted uh the the base mound in in the home plate area in the infield, which which is sodden and uh, you know, the town has spent a lot of money in in making that a a premier um field. Um, you know, people that have to walk down a slope uh to go in there, whereas at the middle school, the the tent can be in the in the uh outfield area, which is right beside uh the middle school. Uh so I'd like that looked at as well. If you're going to look at the baseball field, uh I want the middle school.
Chief Kavanaugh, did I see you want to turn in there?
No.
Okay, somebody else, uh?
Uh John, uh John O'Neil, can can you speak to the issue about, and perhaps not at this point, uh but uh ge- getting uh uh wifi and and uh the sound system o- over at the middle school? What what issues, if any, would we have there?
I can't speak uh to the middle school, but I do know that the the softball field location was ideal on a lot of points. The bathrooms, we could pull wifi because there's fiber running to the field house. Um we have the the sound system there, but there was also discussions about bringing in um a sound vendor to do the sound. Um, my honest opinion, you know, I think we're at the point where the location needs to be decided. Um, the same people that we've entrusted, uh you know, all of the town operations to have been on these conference calls discussing everything that's being discussed right now. Um, we all came to the conclusion that this was really the best location for us. This year's town meeting is absolutely not going to be ideal. Um, I think we know that. We all know that. Um, it would just be great, you know, if there's some faith in us in this location and working out all the logistics.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
McCoy?
Yeah, no, I'm just listening to Selectman Kyra and I do agree with some of his uh points. I mean, I think it's in our best interest to come up with a close uh location tonight because obviously a couple of weeks away is it's gonna be here before you know it. And I heard uh Suckman uh Omahoney stated that there are three articles that have to deal with the seniors. So it sounds like the best location would be right now would be the softball field at the technical standpoint, rather than to have in the bathrooms. We all know the senior citizens are the most vulnerable because of this pandemic, you know? Uh as we're talking about it, I think I'd be more in favor of getting the location now if it means the softball field. Obviously, younger folks would have a better advantage getting out there, work, do the budget, whatever articles that we want to maybe put to another time where seniors, I'm sure, are gonna have a lot of input on what they want to see. And maybe have a special town meeting in the fall and then we just uh memorialize a phone tonight at the uh town meeting for a special town meeting down the road. You know, unless, you know, I'm all ears, if there's other, but just don't think there's a lot of options that
Nice.
Mrs. Omahoney?
Sure, I think Selectman Eaton asked a really great question that I think the town moderator was going to answer um and then stopped. Uh wasn't able to answer. Um, is there anything prohibiting us from being able to say the location will be outdoors at the high school and then putting specifics later?
Uh yeah, so I addressed this with Mark, uh Mark Rich, Town Council, uh last week on our phone call. So uh we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to make another announcement relative to the location change for the uh annual town meeting. Uh and uh to the best of my recollection, again, uh Mark's not here to confirm this, but it would be, uh Jonathan is here uh representing uh KP in Town Council. Um, so when when you, we are going to be giving uh the notice relative to the location of town meeting, I believe it has to be given with specificity. Uh, right, Jonathan, as to why we're required to put um, you know, we're having it, it doesn't just say we're having it one in high schools, it says we're having it one in high school auditorium. And from all the discussions I've been on relative to how the Attorney General's Office is handling um your your procedure, uh they're very concerned with, again, this was what's been relayed to me. They're concerned with how you go about relaying your information, the procedure and process by which you relay all this information because we're in such a novel time. So I would opine and and I'll let uh Attorney Silverstein speak to this as well. That when we do issue a uh a another notice, it's gonna have to be with specificity. We can't just say at the high school, because right now, we're at the Joanne Benton Auditorium in the high school, so it's going to be s- with some sort of reasonable specificity uh as to the location, softball field, you know, baseball field, middle school. Uh, middle school baseball field, uh something along that elk.
Jonathan?
Sure. Uh, so you know, the statute simply says that the notice has to contain the date, time and place of the continued meeting. Um, but of course, the issue is when you have a large property like a high school or um a middle school where there are multiple locations, just showing up at the front door might not tell you necessarily where you're supposed to be going. And so uh I do think I I agree that it would be important to stay with as much specificity as possible where people are supposed to be going. Particularly if it's gonna make a difference on where they're parking uh and which entrance they're coming in, if an entrance, you know? Uh, so uh I would agree that you would want to make sure to specify the location on a larger property like that. If you had a one-room schoolhouse, then it it wouldn't be an issue.
Mr. Chair, can I ask another follow-up question?
Please do.
And I think this might be for the chief. Can we see that diagram again? Sorry, John, I keep asking you to put it up there.
No worries.
So chief, the so off of Church Street, kind of that that driveway in between the high school and abundant life?
Yes.
Is there any way to make that additional handicap parking or is it not wide enough?
So with the school law being in session, and that did come up, that there is some additional parking in the rear of the building, um both over by the baseball diamond and then back towards the um back towards the rear side of the stand. So there is some parking available there. Uh it's a much shorter walk and then even the alleyway leading in, um I guess I could it it's technically, it's a It's technically, it's a fire lane during school hours, I'm not a hundred percent sure if it would be a huge issue. That day if we did one side as opposed to another and at least kept the. Kept it eight and a half feet, because that's really what I need for the truck. But there is definitely some parking behind the building and then along with the loading dock area is. There's some additional parking there, so. Let's say you have at least room for another dozen or so vehicles on that that section of the school as well.
I mean, I I think my ultimate concern with regards to the current location of the softball field. Is just making sure that the seniors have access to attend, you know, it's tough enough for them to come out and kind of risk. The the current situation that we're all in with social distancing and. And and being at least six feet apart and things like that, I wouldn't want to see. The logistics of this be another barrier to get anyone there, and so I I think if if we can find a way to address. More kind of priority and handicap parking for that demographic or for anyone who who has trouble mobility issues. I could support, you know, it being, I still think. I I still kind of question the baseball, I understand we put a lot of money into it, I guess thankfully we didn't for the softball field, but. The reality is, it seems like it, there's a lot more parking that's a lot closer and I understand the bathroom issue, but. I would like to explore that more, but ultimately, if you can, if you feel comfortable that we'd be able to get more cars, at least somewhat closer. You know, I could get on board with the softball field.
I do, and and one of the things I do want to point out with the baseball field is that that fence goes all the way down to the dugout, so they if. If we're in the outfield of the baseball field, your your people are having to walk all the way down to the dugout and. They have to walk all the way back, because that's a staircase right there, so they they have to walk down, go out at the dugout, walk back up to where this. You know, with a little white kind of triangle in the in the sidewalk is about midway and then walk up into the school, so so you're really. You are shortening it some, but but it's not a whole lot and they're going up and down grade a couple of times, which. You know, can can become a little difficult, whereas the softball field is a bit of a walk, and I I could almost say we could. Hopefully turn that rectangle to go from right field out to center as opposed to left field out to center. Which would bring it closer to the football field and the gate was right there, right where the dirt ends, walk straight across.
Perfect, okay.
Like to jump in here, Mrs. Omohoney, chief, remind me, it's been a while since I've been on that field, I think Relay for Life might have been the last time I was on that actual field. Other than watching a baseball game, the fence goes all the way around, as you mentioned. It's kind of tough to see from this angle, but there is a fence that goes all the way around. So the entrances there are along the third baseline, where you can come in or by the dugouts, right? Is there any other entrances in that fence that I'm missing?
No, there isn't, so again, that's basically both your dugouts and I believe there's a wider fence. Don't quote me, but I believe there's a wider fence, kind of almost where the where the track and the the baseball field meet. So that they can, public works can get their mowers out there, but besides that, that's. It's a relatively limited access field.
Mr. Chair, I I would suggest as much as, I'm certainly one of the ones that wants to. Get a decision as soon as possible, but I do think it is worth taking a look at the. Middle school as an option and perhaps the board can consider. Having a a special meeting next Monday for the specific purpose of. Deciding this issue, I I recall the Relay for Life during the high school construction years. Was held over on that field behind the middle school. And and certainly did get a fair amount of attendance, if you recall, we did have a town meetings. And and other meetings over at the middle school auditorium, so we have had a larger crowds parking there. I I don't know offhand what the restraints or or challenges would be for. Wifi or or sound system, I do recall that there's access to the library or media area there. In the back, that then when you get in there, there's a fairly short distance to. Some restrooms. I I understand and certainly George and I talk a lot about the schools and trying to restrict access when he's. Trying to get work done in those buildings, but you know, if we have to have. A custodian, we would have a custodian there anyways, just advising people that they're confined to a particular area for the purposes of the restrooms. I think that's doable, so I I believe that we at least ought to take a a serious look at the middle school. You know, the other, the other possibility would be on the existing plot that was just up to slide the. Tent forward towards the diamond, obviously keeping off the the infield rather. On the softball field, but that, in the big scheme of things, really doesn't. Reduce the distance if if it was to be, if that rectangle was to be slid further to, I guess it would be the. What, the east or west, west, I guess, towards the infield, that might. Reduce the journey to some measure, but not appreciably, I think, you know, the challenge, one of the challenges I see with the. Baseball field is, as was mentioned, there's some steps going down there. You know, I I have some concern about the elder population, certainly. We don't want anybody falling trying to get down to the field. So that that would be my suggestion that we. Take a hard look at the middle school, if and if the board is willing to reconvene. On Monday, then we can, that's June first, if a decision could be made at that point, then we still. Have, you know, a few weeks to get the word out. On the location.
All right, folks, I want to be mindful of the time and I want to be respectful of everybody's time here this evening. Manager has just outlined an opportunity for us to convene this conversation come next Monday, it looks like we've narrowed it down to. Thoughts. I personally have the utmost confidence in our department that will, wherever we choose it. It will, it will be successfully safe for everybody to access, but I understand. That if board members want to continue this the following Monday, I'll leave it up to my colleagues.
Mr. Chairman, quick comment, and I know you want to wrap it up, just real quick, I really think it's problematic for seniors to get to that softball field. I don't, I do agree with the manager, it it is problematic, I do like the idea of Mr. Kyra talking about the middle school. And I just want to revisit this one more time, Mr. Kyra brought up, and now that I'm thinking about it, right on the town comment, we've got the PA system. July, we closed down both streets, you got parking right at the Fourth of July, you have a toilet and bat men- menhams and ladyhood facilities right at the Fourth of July. I would like to see that be an option, right at the town common, right there, no different than Fourth of July, you detour the traffic around like we did. And we have parking right there, we can walk right across the street, bathroom facilities are there. And for the young folks, if that's what it takes, you put some porta potties, I mean, that's another option if we could look at, that's all.
Anybody else want it? Mr. Eaton?
Just briefly, Mr. Bendel, I am available next Monday if if we wanted to. I guess tie this this issue up, just on the issue on bifurcating some of the articles. And I don't know if a decision needs to be made at the same time as to that, but I just want to be mindful of the comment that this new house made tonight that. If a second wave is coming, she's expecting that it might be happening in the fall, and I, Mr. O'Neill, I think is very wise in saying that. This is not going to be an ideal situation, no matter what. At some point, we're gonna need to have to make a decision and kind of live with it, but it's not going to be the ideal, we're going to miss a lot of the amenities that we've taken for granted, but that's. What everyone's been doing the last two and a half months. But I I am hesitant to. Specific issues into the fall, because the the health implications of that may be worse than they are. A month from now, but again, it's anybody's guess what a month from now is going to look like. So if we can put off that decision right now, my preference would be to do so. But again, I'm a little bit, this is uncharted waters for me as well, as to. What decisions need to be made in the short term and what what could be put off until.
Mr. Chair, just to to speak to that issue is with respect to articles. I quite frankly would prefer to try to take as as much of the meeting up on the twenty seventh as we can. These articles, these warrant articles, there's planning that goes into. Those articles and and timing issues certainly on the school side as well as the town side. Notwithstanding the point that was made about the senior center, which I think is a good one that, you know, we don't want to. I think it's going to be a struggle for many seniors to to go to an outdoor forum. Wherever it is, so the prospect of perhaps. Considering a special town meeting in the fall, whether it's September, thereabouts. For consideration of the senior center is is worthy, I would prefer that we try to address. The other articles, as many of them as we can at the twenty seventh meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Omohoney?
Thank you, I I don't. I don't want to keep kind of throwing new suggestions out, I feel like we had a committee on, you know. Trying to figure this out for a little while now that we weren't a part of. So I'm not really sure, you know, I think the longer we talk about it, the more options we're going to throw out there to explore, and the reality is, I think we, it sounds like we need to make a decision. So I'm comfortable tonight saying it should just be at the softball field and the hope would be between now and June twenty seventh, we're going to figure out the logistics to make sure it's safe. For everybody who wants to attend, and with regards to, you know, bifurcating any part of the meeting, I I agree with with. With Mr. Hull and Mr. Eaton, I I want to accomplish everything that we can accomplish that day, because we don't know. You know, I would hate to, I would hate to defer some of it to September and then we have a spike in September and we can't. Do it then, and you know, the the seniors, as they've said over and over again, they've been waiting long enough and we obviously didn't expect this. But I wouldn't want to delay any any kind of progress towards all of the different efforts we're trying to make, the senior center, the the feasibility studies. The school staff. So I would suggest with regards to that component, you know, I my my first thing is the the location. The committee suggested to us it should be at the softball field, I like chief's idea that if we can turn it. Kind of, you know, at a ninety-degree angle so that it's more in right field than left field, at least it's less walking, if there's a way we can add more parking closer. For priority and handicap parking, great, we have the facilities already there, we know the wifi is going to work there. We've already, I guess, addressed the big concerns with regards to the articles. I don't know if, is the elder services commission meeting right now?
They have not been meeting.
Because I don't know if there's a way just to get feedback, because they're they're kind of the commission we've been going to for input on all these different ideas and plans. It would be great to get feedback from, you know, either Terry or the commission as to what their thoughts about. This town, do they want it to be delayed because they want the opportunity to be able to come when it's going to come, or do they want it on June twenty seventh because they've waited long enough? And I think I would take, I would take my lead from them on that, but you know, if I would like to see us accomplish. All of it on June twenty seventh if we can, just because we don't know what's going to happen next, we don't know. You know, when we can actually do it next. And I I don't, I don't want to see us delaying things inevitably as much as we can accomplish it that day, but I also want to make sure everyone feels heard.
So Mrs. Omohoney, I I agree, I think it's. Be nice if we could come to a conclusion about the, at least the location tonight, so. Want to put your comments in the form of a motion, is that kind of the sense I got from you?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we. That the location for this year's town meeting would be at the Wilmington High School softball field on June twenty seventh.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
Chairman, Mr. Chair, I would, I would go along with the town manager Hull and. Wait until June first, let's vet the area over at the middle school. To see if that's the proper location. And I don't see the rush into having to do this tonight. With all due respect to Chief Kavanaugh, I I've gone down that pathway, you know probably better than I what a truck can fit into. But it'd make me nervous to have cars lined up along that driveway. And and ask a fire engine to come through there, but you're the pro, you know about that, I I understand that there can be some. Some sort of parking over near the the. Loading dock area, but there's there's not more than probably three or four spots there. So that makes me nervous to think that we'd open up about twelve spots. In that area where I would want my public safety people to go. I I just don't, I don't see the need to vote on it tonight, I I agree with Mr. Hull that we should vet that area. With all due respect to Jonathan, who's on the phone, who doesn't think that we're giving. Just due to to what's been going on, I I. Little offended by that and and I don't believe that that's true. I think we are, we've been talking about it for a good while now and we want to do what's best. For the residents, I just think the distance and walking in the bathroom locations is not conducive. For that softball field and I think it's better at the middle school, but. However it turns out, it's going to turn out fine, and as for the articles, I agree with Mr. Hull, we should try to take everything up. That we can.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra, Mr. Eaton, want to add discussion?
I just that I I would hope that. I'm not sure, Mr. Kyra, if your comments were directed at me or Attorney Silverstein.
No, 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 I, you know, I, that's, it was meant for John O'Neill, I think he's the IT person who. Made a comment that we're not taking the recommendation in good faith of the whatever he had mentioned, and it kind sounded kind of. Offensive to me, so it it had nothing to do with you, Mr. Eaton, it was to the. The IT person who's on the, who's on this call.
I'll at least state the obvious and state that there's too many Johns in this in this meeting. But. My my hope is certainly that the town would at least be able to provide bottles of water, preferably cold, and also make sure that we do have. Some first responders on site in case of excessive heat, just in case, because it's. We've got more hurdles than this one than we normally do, and we we, I have no doubt, I mean, it's almost ten o'clock at night, we're almost three hours into this meeting. And we haven't even gotten to communications yet, and it's very clear that there's been an awful lot of heavy lifting on logistics. Going on, but I just want to make sure that. We're doing what we can to make sure that that no one's suffering any kind of events.
Mr. Chairman, you have an ask for a second, I agree with Selectman Kyra, if you're gonna, I think it's a bad spot at the. At the softball field, I mean, if you're gonna try to do everything on one, at least give the seniors an opportunity to at least park close to at least walk. I think if you have it at the softball field, you're discouraging them to show, and. And if you want to do it all in one shot, do it at the middle school, probably your best bet, that's what I look at, give them an opportunity to at least go.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy, we do have a second for Mr. Eaton, so we are under discussion.
We did, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
No problem, no problem. Mrs. Omohoney, it's been seconded by Mr. Eaton, I just want to add my own two cents under discussion here. Again, we can all agree. Going to be challenging, maybe we are, but having sit in, sat in on the majority of the calls over the last couple of weeks. I tend to think that I have the confidence in the our department heads, the different departments. Their expertise when it comes to safety and really logistics of hosting a meeting anywhere outdoors. So I would be comfortable with the softball field, although I know it's not ideal. But I think in the time, I would be comfortable as well supporting that, you know, I think the middle school is a great idea as well. But again, having listened to all the conversations, if our our department heads, if our different departments feel comfortable with the softball field. I have to put my trust in them. So is there any other discussion from board members, we do have a motion in a second? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Kyra?
No.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
No.
Mrs. Omohoney?
Yes.
And Mr. Bendel is a yes, the motion carries three to two. The softball field at the high school will be the location, that takes care of one issue. In terms of what the warrant will look like, well, we know what the warrant will look like, but what the meeting will actually look like. Mr. Peterson, maybe I'll go back to you, is that something you want to talk about and come to a decision tonight? I'll go back to you. Is that something you wanna talk about and come to a decision tonight? Uh, that question is fair. You win, Mr. Howell.
Yeah, I'll ju- ju- jump in, uh, really quick first. So, as far as, uh, I don't think you're under, uh, any sort of time pressure legally, uh, because how are you gonna go about disposing of, uh, whatever articles you would not wanna take up at town meetings? But we're, it's gonna be, uh, it's a proceed, if there are procedural motions that are taken on the floor at town meeting. I just think, uh, as far as practicality purpose goes, um, th- there should be some sort of an agreement struck, uh, in the next, you know, you know, week or probably the next week between now and, and I would say, try to get something out, you know, the first week of June as to how you wanna handle it. So I don't necessarily think it needs to be decided tonight, uh, but it needs to be decided, you know, soon. How, how are you gonna handle it? Just so we can get that information out to the folks.
Mr. Howell, I'll ask you the same question.
I, I would agree. I think that, uh, it does not need to be addressed tonight. I do believe it should be, uh, decided at your meeting on the 8th. Uh, we have the, a joint hearing of the finance committee and the, uh, planning board on the 9th. I think it would be, uh, good going into that meeting, uh, for some clarity on that point. Uh, so I, I would say, uh, let's pursue it on the 8th.
Okay, is there any objection to that? Certainly a lot to chew on what the meeting will look like. We all are certainly thinking about, uh, our vulnerable population, which is, uh, majority of our seniors. So we wanna make sure, uh, we take a very close look at this. Any objection to continuing this part of the conversation till the 8th? Hearing none, uh, that will conclude this, uh, with the meeting. I do wanna, uh, thank the moderator and the clerk and others, uh, the finance, uh, chair, uh, and everybody who, uh, Attorney Silverstein, who joined us. Uh, I know it was a little bit longer than we expected, but obviously very, very important. Uh, and we will, uh, be faced with some challenges. I think he's asking for a bathroom break, so right after this, we're gonna, uh, I'm gonna motion for a two-minute recess. I think, uh, looking at the clock, I think, uh, three hours in, we could, some people are looking for, to use the restroom. So, thank you to those folks on the call. Appreciate your time and staying with us here this evening. Please take care of yourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, with that, Mr. Howell, I'm gonna call for a two-minute recess, if that's okay with everybody. Uh, it's 10:10 PM.
Sounds good.
Meeting to order again at 9:58 PM. Uh, and before we move into communications, I just quickly wanna thank, uh, friends at WCTV who are broadcasting this, uh, meeting live. They're also, um, screen, putting the phone number to call in. Uh, if you're staying up late with us and you'd like to make a public comment shortly, the number's at the bottom of the screen. Uh, so thank you to WCTV. Uh, and thank you to our IT Director, John O'Neal, who's doing an awesome job, uh, running these meetings for us. You'll see a number of graphics coming up on the screen, which is advantageous, uh, to these remote meetings. And, uh, there's still, uh, many more of those graphics to come. So thank you to John for administering this meeting. And thank you to our administrative assistant, Beverly Dalton, who's taking the minutes as we move forward. Uh, and with that, we have, uh, about 10 communications, Mr. Howell. And to my colleagues, if you feel the need to jump in, please do so. If you have a question or comment, uh, feel free to, uh, chime in here as we move along. Mr. Howell, communications?
Yes, uh, the first item under communications, uh, was a town council opinion with respect to the electronic signature policy. You may recall that at the previous meeting, uh, there was discussion, uh, about a sig-, uh, the electronic signature, uh, process. And there was a reference made to the fact that the, uh, planning board, uh, the planning, uh, in conservation, uh, were taking up the issue of authorizing electronic signatures for the purpose of, uh, expediting the ability to get their decisions signed, given, particularly given this current circumstance with COVID. Uh, the question was raised as to whether, uh, the town manager, uh, has the authority to, uh, authorize other boards, uh, to, um, take those actions. And, uh, as is indicated in the correspondence and the backup, uh, references made to, to those, uh, boards and committees that the town manager appoints, uh, the authority does allow, uh, for those boards and committees to go forward with that practice. Uh, certainly in the case of the Board of Selectmen, it's, uh, board's call in terms of how to proceed there. Uh, next, under communication is, uh, discussion or communication with regard to the phased opening of recreational, uh, facilities. And, uh, there's, I think the, or the best way to describe this is the chart that you have in front of you, uh, which references, uh, the openings and those areas yet to be opened. Just going down the list very quickly, uh, athletic fields, uh, can be opened, uh, but not for any, uh, pickup games, organized, uh, games or tournaments, uh, no shared equipment, no permits to be issued. Uh, basketball courts are not allowed to be open through the remainder of phase one. Uh, phase two, perhaps, uh, they can be opened at that point. Uh, again, these, uh, just as, um, a preface here, these guidelines are taken from, uh, a document received from the, uh, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, uh, which, uh, is the basis for this. Uh, baseball fields, softball fields, uh, are open, toss and catch activities, no pickup games, organized, uh, games, dugouts closed, bleachers closed. Uh, and again, the recommendation of the, uh, directive is, uh, only, uh, players from the same family, no permits to be issued. Uh, the dog park, uh, can be opened, uh, with certain requirements there in terms of the distancing, uh, leashed if necessary or by voice command. Uh, playgrounds, uh, the specific play areas, uh, not to be open through phase one. Uh, tennis and pickleball, uh, can be open. Social distancing practices are required, no shared equipment, no games, organized games, uh, tournaments. Uh, town forest, Rotary Park, town comm, and all these passive recreation areas, uh, can be opened. And the skate park, uh, cannot be open through phase one. The one exception, uh, in terms of the general categories here is that the Yentile Park, uh, remains closed through, uh, phase one. Uh, as I noted in my, uh, email to the board, this is a multipurpose area, which is certainly valuable in many respects, but I think the, uh, challenge is gonna be, uh, to open that up. We have, um, historically had people not only from Wilmington, but other communities use the space. Uh, it's gonna be very difficult to enforce, uh, many of these requirements. Obviously, who, uh, it's, uh, you know, to the extent people are playing on the fields, uh, the expectation is they're doing so not in a competitive way, uh, but to open up the Yentile, in my estimation, is going to, um, uh, consume a lot of the time of the police department, uh, trying to keep folks, uh, um, off of the playgrounds and out of the basketball courts.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
I just add two quick questions from Mr. Howell. When I was reading these, I appreciate, uh, kinda the chart. Is that gonna, my first question is, how is that information communicated to the public? Is that chart available on our website?
Uh, y- yes, if, uh, if it isn't, uh, already out there, and I think, uh, John O'Neal, uh, had put it up, but we certainly will have it up there. And we're also, um, signs are, uh, being placed up, uh, as well, um, to, um, advise people about the restrictions.
Okay. And then the second question is just more about enforcement, because I noticed kind of like for baseball, softball fields, it specified kind of only players from the same family. Uh, and then the other field, it just says no pickup games or organized games. Uh, but, you know, if, you know, let's say five kids all happen to be at the park and they decide to kick a ball back and forth, you know, is that considered a pickup game at that point? Or is that something that is gonna be allowed? And who would be enforcing? Or who would be checking in on that? I, I'm just trying to prevent, you know, the chiefs from getting it, all kinds of crazy calls. If there's less than 10 people on a field appearing to socially distant, you know, who's gonna be the one enforcing that situation?
Well, so unfortunately or fortunately, it, it is gonna be the police department. Uh, and there's obviously a measure of, uh, discretion here that need, will be exercised. Uh, the police chief, I've had, uh, conversations with him and, and Shelley Newhouse. Uh, the expectation is, uh, you know, to the extent that there are large crowds that are gathered, they'll be asked to disperse and, and move on. Uh, the intent is to not, uh, be punitive, uh, uh, but to simply inform people that, you know, this, this can't happen if there's, uh, three or four kids on a field. I think, um, depending upon, you know, if there's social distancing, I, you know, I don't think that's gonna be, um, an issue. Uh, and, and obviously it's, uh, one of many issues that the police department will have to deal with here in the next several weeks.
Thank you.
Did you have another question?
No, that was, I just wanted to make sure that information was being shared, cause I know there's been a lot of questions around it, especially over this last weekend when, when it was kind of confirmed that was gonna be part of phase one. I just wanna make sure that, you know, I don't know if it might make sense to send these out also to kind of the organized sports organizations, just so they can communicate it, um, to the families that might be involved, uh, so that they're aware of kinda what fields are open and for, with what restrictions around them.
Do you think it would be helpful if I posted, uh, just the chart, uh, we had up? And, you know, I can post to social media and the website?
I think that would be great. Yes, cause I think that helps clarify kind of what's open and for what purposes.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the, Mr. Howell's memo is on the town's website. It's, uh, the first item under news. And that does include the chart.
Great. Thank you.
I'm sure, uh, like, uh, like many of you, I've been getting calls too about, uh, messages online about, you know, when can my kid go down? When can we go to this park? When can we go to that park? It's beautiful. The weather has been, as you know, phenomenal. Looks like the next couple of days are gonna be beautiful summer days and people are really itching to get out of the house and get out of the yard and get a little change of scenery, uh, which is understandable. Um, uh, so this is gonna be a challenge. I know it's, you know, we're looking at at least 13 more days of phase one, uh, based on what the governor's indicated to us, uh, at least. You know, Shelley made mention earlier that perhaps that might be longer. Um, but we've really come a long way and we're so close to, uh, you know, making a lot of progress here that, you know, we're really asking people to bear with us. This is a difficult decision. I really grapple with Yentile. It's such a beautiful facility and, you know, there's a lot more than just a playground there. There's people that really like to walk that, that area. And, and, and so I'm really grappling with that, that part, part of this myself. Uh, but a lot of this is driven by, by the governor's, uh, uh, phases that, uh, he's outlined. So, uh, you know, it's not ideal, folks. And I guess that would be my message to, to residents that, uh, it's not ideal for anybody, but we, these, some of the things we have to do to make sure we can get to the finish line here.
Uh, next, under correspondence is, uh, memo, uh, to the board with regard to, uh, Silver Lake, uh, and, uh, efforts to, uh, take another, one, one last shot at, uh, recruiting, uh, lifeguards, uh, in, in the, uh, prospect of opening the beach. The, uh, discussion at the last meeting, as you recall, was that, uh, in light of the fact that we had been advertising essentially since January 6th, uh, we had one, uh, individual interested, uh, did not happen to have their certification. Uh, the, um, request, uh, uh, was, um, made, uh, of me to consider, uh, uh, giving one more, uh, opportunity for people to, um, uh, to, uh, express interest in serving as lifeguards. And it's, uh, uh, I've indicated that, uh, we will, um, do that through June 12th. Uh, we do need to, um, use that as a hard and fast, uh, deadline at this point because of the, uh, logistics associated with getting the program going. Uh, there's everything from the testing of the, uh, lake water that has to happen a couple of weeks in advance of its open, which Shelley takes care of, uh, to the orientation process that, um, uh, Karen and her, uh, staff go through. So, uh, that is the, um, the plan. We will advertise again through, uh, with the expectation that any interested parties, uh, submit their letters of interest or applications by June 12th.
And I wanna mention that, uh, this idea came from Mr. Eaton. Uh, I appreciate your, uh, trying to pick outside the box and just try to make one more last ditch effort here to try to salvage the season at the beach, recognizing that, you know, the guards is really a challenge. Not having enough guards right now is really a challenge for us.
Yeah, just, if I could speak briefly on that, Mr. Chairman, it won't take too long to get to it. It's, I, that, we just did not have the staffing interests on the first several months of the year. And staffing is always an issue. I think two years ago, we, we had, um, we barely made the minimum that we wanted and we moved it back the time when we started, um, soliciting folks to, um, to express an interest in being lifeguards. And that, that continued this year. And there's only one interested person. Certainly, we've, we've got a steep hill to climb, but I think we do owe it to residents to, uh, at least try and do so and, uh, I guess, do the best that we can out of the circumstances. Understanding that it's not like, once we hit that number, we can open up the beach next day. There's a fair amount of work behind the scenes that goes into making sure that the, uh, the guards, the guards are trained and properly certified, and also that the water is safe and the beach is ready, uh, for folks. So it's, uh, certainly a steep hill to climb, but I think we, we at least owe it to residents to give it one last shot. Um, see what happens.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton.
Mr. Chairman, just a, could I have a clarification from Mr. Howell?
Go ahead.
On, on the memo, uh, Jeff, in the second paragraph, a few lines down, it says that there were 10 individuals that expressed interest. And then in the next line down, it said a total of one person expressing interest. So is it 10 individuals or one? I guess I'm a little confused.
Well, so there were 10 from the prior year that, uh, early on, when Karen reached out, um, they expressed interest in returning. And then, uh, when the postings went up as of, uh, January 6th, uh, there was one individual, new individual, uh, that expressed interest. So 10 from the prior year, uh, one new person.
Okay, so we do have 10 lifeguards available out of the projected 15 to 20 lifeguards that we need, with one person who's not qualified yet.
Uh, there, there were, there were 10, uh, individuals that had expressed interest. Um, and I don't recall exactly when the initial inquiry was made, uh, but after the, uh, decision was, that I, I made the decision, uh, to, in consultation with Shelley and, uh, um, Karen, uh, that the beach wouldn't be open, uh, those individuals were contacted to advise them that, um, the beach was not gonna be open this summer and that, um, you know, we wanted to give them adequate notice in the event that they had other employment opportunities. Uh, since the conversation with, um, uh, Selectman Eaton, I've asked Karen Campbell, uh, to reach out to those 10 individuals, uh, to see if, uh, if the beach is reopened, if we have the staffing, would they be interested in, uh, uh, in fact, coming back? Or, uh, in, of the 10, uh, she has, uh, received, uh, interest, uh, or receive, received response from four of those 10.
So, Mr. Howell?
So, I don't know about the others.
Mr. Kyra, just a follow-up question. What's the total number of people who have actually applied? Is it one?
Uh, so again, there were, e- each year, the first step that is taken is that those individuals that served as lifeguards in the preceding year are invited back, or many of them are, not perhaps all of them, but certainly most of them. And that was done again this year. And, uh, 10 of those individuals, including the lead, uh, person who is essentially responsible for the other lifeguards, these 10 individuals expressed interest in returning. Uh, knowing that, uh, there was a need for additional lifeguards, uh, Karen posted through various mediums, um, the notice seeking additional lifeguards. So, there was only one additional lifeguard, uh, that expressed interest. Uh, you know, would be a new person to, to the group, so to speak. So from January 6th to May 12th, when the notice was running, there was one new person that expressed an interest in serving as a lifeguard at Silver Lake.
Okay, so calling all lifeguards, we need your help.
And I, I would just note also that it's, certainly lifeguards are, are the key here, but in light of the current circumstances with COVID, uh, we're also gonna have to up the number of, um, uh, gate attendance, because the lifeguard's clear focus needs to be on people in the water. Uh, and there's going to be a requirement this year that, obviously with the social distancing, the requirement that the, uh, governor has is that, uh, you know, in groups, uh, they have to be 12 feet apart. you know, in groups, uh, they have to be twelve feet apart. So it's individuals six feet apart, groups twelve feet apart. So we're going to have to have additional personnel to manage that process. Um, so we'll be looking for uh, attendance as well.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next under correspondence uh, is a memo uh, from me outlining the um, proposed offsets to the revenue shortfall uh, that we're projecting that we will have in uh, in the upcoming fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, so you'll recall that uh, uh, the estimated revenue shortfall at this point uh, is roughly one million five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, largely through local aid, uh, education aid, unrestricted general government aid, uh, and other categories, including the local meals tax. Uh, and so in the last couple of weeks, uh, there's been discussions uh, uh, with uh, Brian Perry, uh, Kerry Coburn Dion, uh, and the school representatives uh, to, as well as department heads, to look at ways to uh, offset uh, that um, that shortfall. Uh, and so the um, proposal uh, that I'm putting forward here, uh, starting at the top, the warrant article for the July fourth uh, activities, as you know, uh, that's fifty thousand dollars uh, this year without a July fourth uh, program. Um, uh, that uh, fifty thousand dollars can be uh, removed from the budget. Shawshin Tech initially back in uh, December, January, when the budget was being put together, uh, based upon the best information we had at that time, uh, the estimate was that the assessment would increase by five percent. Uh, we've since learned in late February, the increase uh, to the assessment is three percent. So the net savings there is uh, ninety-three thousand seventy-five dollars. Uh, there was money put in the planning department's budget uh, to begin a, a look at a um, sort of a master plan, so to speak, or a longer range plan for putting sidewalks in, in various parts of town. Uh, the cost of that was eleven thousand dollars, um, proposing that that be tabled at the moment. Uh, town council uh, budget, uh, fifteen thousand is proposed uh, to, in a, in a reduction from that budget. Uh, police cruisers, there was originally a request for uh, for uh, police cruisers, um, proposing to uh, reduce that to two cruisers. So the net savings there is uh, one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the, the, these next ones all deal with capital. Uh, there was two hundred thousand dollars that was proposed uh, to, for two purposes. One was for um, the evaluation or, or a closer look, if you will, at the six uh, elementary school buildings in terms of how they might be um, restructured, uh, consolidated. Um, and tha- that cost, um, as we learned when we were putting in the uh, SOIs for the uh, with the state, uh, the statements of interest, uh, if we're invited into that program, uh, we will have to go through that process uh, with the MSBA, Mass School Building Authority. So uh, we're looking to uh, take those funds out of this amount, uh, which would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, leaving eighty thousand dollars, uh, which is the cost to hire consulting services to uh, assist us in developing a short to intermediate plan for what we do with the personnel and the students at the Wildwood School. Uh, even if we are successful in getting into the MSBA, uh, it's going to be a good seven, perhaps eight years before there's a new school and we need to be able to uh, come up with a game plan uh, sooner than that. So that is a hundred and twenty thousand dollar uh, savings, so to speak, there. Uh, these next items, uh, the, the high school capital, uh, they're looking for a hundred and ninety-five thousand for high school laptops, a hundred and ninety-five thousand uh, for pre-K and K laptops. Uh, those were originally uh, slated to come from the tax levy. Uh, I'm suggesting that we move those requests into free cash. Uh, similarly, the central dispatch, uh, there's some work that needs to be done uh, in there in terms of replacing flooring. Uh, some upgrades um, in, in terms of uh, that workspace. Uh, the estimated cost is a hundred and ninety-four thousand, again slated to come from uh, the tax levy. I'm proposing that be also funded through free cash. Uh, vacuum uh, street sweeper, uh, proposed for uh, tax levy, two hundred and eighty thousand. Looking to take that from free cash. Uh, and then uh, the second phase of the resurfacing of the Woburn Street parking lot, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Uh, that was slated to come from the tax levy, um, proposing that that come from free cash. And uh, then in part, uh, to, obviously that increases the amount of free cash that would be drawn upon. Uh, two issues here with regard to the school and town admin building. Um, in an effort to focus on the uh, senior center, uh, and uh, also focusing on the Wildwood School a- and also to um, lessen the impact of free cash, I'm proposing that the, this administrative facilities um, uh, study be a tabled. That was nine hundred and fifty-five thousand. Uh, that leaves um, a little less than eighty-two thousand dollars that the school department is uh, responsible for uh, making some adjustments to their budget. And that is what is proposed at this point. Next, under um, correspondence is a a joint uh, letter from the school superintendent uh, and myself with regard to uh, the um, programs that typically run during the summer, the CARES program and the athletic camps, as well as the town's recreation programs, Tiny Tots, uh, Kids Club and the playground programs. Uh, again, the, unfortunately, these programs are casualty, casualty to COVID nineteen. Uh, the challenges of social distancing, uh, kids who are anywhere from four years old to um, seventh, eighth grade. Uh, the intent of most of these programs is clearly to uh, engage in social activities, uh, develop friendships and so on. Uh, it's our conclusion that it's just not going to be possible uh, to do that uh, this summer. Uh, next is uh, correspondence uh, from me to the board with regard to a statehouse note for the water uh, water tank on Nassau Hill. You'll recall, uh, Article twenty-six of the May fifth, two thousand, two thousand eighteen town meeting, uh, requested authorization to borrow two point five million dollars for the replacement of the uh, water tank. Uh, that existing water tank was built in the, I believe it was the late twenties, early thirties. Uh, it was authorized. Uh, we did in fact borrow, issued a uh, band bond anticipation note. The work has largely been done. We've spent a little under two million dollars. There's still some work to be done. Uh, that bond uh, comes due June fifth. Uh, the expectation is um, uh, with the board's uh, signature that the bond be authorized for an additional year. This does not require a vote of the board, since the town meeting already authorized the borrowing, uh, but will require at least three of five uh, signatures uh, for, from the board to um, uh, issue a, a new um, note. Uh, next is um, a letter uh, to the Wilmington Community Fund, and I just want to very quickly read this into the record. Uh, this is to Deanna Digrigorio, President of Wilmington Community Fund. Uh, "The COVID nineteen pandemic has had a dramatic effect on communities across the country and throughout the world. Uh, we have been tested in ways not seen for many years. A fundamental means to sustain ourselves through tough times and tragedies is through the charity of individuals and organizations. The Wilmington Community Fund has been there for Wilmington since nineteen forty-five, serving the local community and fulfilling a variety of needs. Most recently, I was contacted by Joan Sirfoss uh, offering on behalf of the organization to donate five thousand dollars towards the effort to provide residents with face masks and gloves uh, as protective measures against the virus. Thanks to this generosity, generosity of the Wilmington Community Fund, Health Director Shelley Newhouse was able to obtain fa- face masks and gloves and distribute them in uh, two Wilmington families. In fact, she is continuing to use funds from this donation to purchase additional masks and gloves. On behalf of myself and the Board of Selectmen, a wholehearted thank you is extended to the Wilmington Community Fund for your steadfast support of our community."
Very nice. Yep. Thank you.
Uh, next is um, communications memo from Samantha Reeve. This was noted earlier uh, by uh, Chief Kavanaugh. Uh, this program uh, that uh, she was uh, has initiated. Uh, it turns out it was in the process, in the works already. Uh, but it's intended as another alternative to the disposal of um, uh, medical um, prescriptions. Uh, so that basically these packets can be distributed uh, to um, uh, families who have medications they're looking to dispose of, uh, essentially the um, by adding uh, uh, water, uh, tap water into this packet with the prescription, it uh, uh, essentially disarms, if you will, the medication and it can be uh, tossed out with the regular trash. I would just note, for informational purposes, Wilmington residents are able to get these pouches in accordance with uh, the amount of medication needed to dispose, uh, be disposed of. Uh, they can contact um, Ms. Reeve uh, at uh, S R E I F at W P D dot org or nine seven eight four four seven two two nine six. And this was part of the um, efforts of the Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition. And they'll be available as long as uh, the supplies last.
Thank you to Samantha and the Coalition for that.
Uh, next is a press release. I wanted to make sure the board was aware of uh, with regard to uh, a grant that the police department received, the Cummings Grant. You've sure heard of this because we've received the grant uh, in prior years, but uh, thanks to the good efforts of a number of our uh, police uh, personnel, uh, the town was uh, one of a fairly short list of communities, a hundred and thirty communities of uh, out of uh, seven hundred and thirty-eight applicants uh, to receive, in our case, a ten-year grant uh, for uh, three hundred thousand dollars. So that's thirty thousand dollars a year. Uh, and this um, grant uh, will support a number of different programs, including National Night Out, uh, the Citizens Police Academy, uh, Citizen CPR class and a number of other programs that have become a um, a, a part of the Wilmington uh, police offering.
Great news.
Uh, next is just an FYI, uh, noting the appointment of Thomas Olilla uh, to the Conservation Commission. Uh, he is filling the vacancy on that board. It's a one-year term.
Okay, thank you. We have uh, six board to consider items, Mr. Hall?
Uh, yes, uh, the first item under board to consider is authorizing the submission of a one-twelfth budget uh, to the Department of Revenue. The board will be asked to uh, take an action, take a vote actually, to uh, authorize this submission to the Department of Revenue, and I'm going to turn this over to uh, Brian Perry, our Finance Director slash Town Accountant.
All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Um, obviously, our preference is to have the annual budget approved at the town meeting. Uh, typically, that would have already been approved um, in early May, but obviously, these are not typical circumstances. Our hope is to have the budget approved on the twenty-seventh of June at that meeting, but as the manager had mentioned earlier, there are certain um, obstacles that we do face, just even just potentially with um, getting a quorum and having the, the number of people there. So as a backstop, the state has allowed uh, communities to pass a one-twelfth budget, which is essentially um, just to allow operations to continue. It doesn't include anything that's going to need to be voted on in warrant articles, namely capital. Um, it's, it's just to allow the town to continue reasonable operations as they have over years through legally funding um, each department, the expenditures through July. So what I did is I drafted with the same outline that we typically have through the budget book that you'll see. Uh, basically, after meeting with each department head, what we're going to reasonably incur for salary based on contractual union agreements uh, through the month of July. Um, as well as any expenditures that are going to be needed. Um, as you'll see, some of the expenditures are not basically expended in monthly increments. Some of them are pretty sizable one-shot deals, name of the retirement, um, insurance premium, those are paid in full in the beginning of July to afford us the luxury of paying a little bit less over the course of the year. So um, obviously, the hope is if this is approved by the board, we would then work with the Department of Revenue and the Director of Accounts there, just to ensure that in the event that we do need the one-twelfth budget through, to get us through July, um, it would be authorized. We don't want to wait until after the meeting to realize we're behind the eight ball on this. Um, because by then it's going to be too late, to be honest. And there's going to be a bunch of other communities that are in the same position that we are. And obviously, our hope is not to let it wait until the last minute. So I don't know if anyone has any questions specifically as to what the, the budget looks like. It's, it's been pretty consistent year over year as to what we look to spend and we want to make sure it's within the guidelines set forth by the D O R. And I believe the manager had mentioned earlier too, it does need to be in excess of one-twelfth of the prior year, which in this case would be FY twenty, our current year, just to ensure that the town is reasonably funding operations. We're not toward changing anyone, but we're not doing anything drastically different in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Does anybody have any questions for Brian?
I'll make a motion, um, uh, Mr. Chair, that we authorize the submission of the one-twelfth budget uh, to the Department of Revenue.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a, a motion in a second. I saw Mr. Eaton raise his hand. Do you have discussion?
Uh, yeah, more, more of a comment than, than question. Mr. Perry, it's uh, you've had quite the first year on the job. So, uh, just my thanks to you and your staff, and that includes the Assessors' Office and Treasure Collector. Not only do you have to go through the ordinary FY twenty-one planning, but also this uh, figuring out a one-twelfth budget with revised projections and it just, my gratitude for you for the work that, that you and your staff have put in to come up with what is a Plan B.
Uh, I appreciate that. Hopefully, it'll be smooth sailing um, beyond this, but it's uh, it, it's i- i- it does take a lot, and I, I do give a lot of credit to the department heads who, who have a good handle on what they do. Um, timelines, deadlines, uh, and honestly, just an understanding of their cash flows. That always does make my job a little bit easier.
I can just, um, I, I guess, thank you, just because I, I can only imagine. You probably thought you were getting close to being out of the woods a few months ago, and uh, here we go again.
I, I did. To be honest, I thought we did all the, all, all the hard work to get us ready for March, and then we have to, have to tear it down, and there's a great deal of uncertainty. Um, pretty much everywhere as to what's going to happen as far as the budget is going to be going forward. And I know we hit on some of the, some of the challenges we have, just looking at the state aid going forward. And the problem is that no one has any guidance right now. No one knows. It's kind of a shot in the dark right now, and that's a struggle.
I just wanted to express my gratitude and thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mr. Eaton.
Uh, okay, so we have a, a motion by Mr. uh, Kyra, seconded by Mr. McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll call for the vote. Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton? Mr. Eaton?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Omahaoni?
Yes.
And Mr. Bendel's a yes. I think you got about eight yeses there.
That works. I'll let the D O R know. Okay, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, next under board to consider is a request from Tina Conway, uh, Town Clerk with regard to uh, appointing additional election workers. I think she mentioned this earlier in her uh, comments about the need for um, additional individuals, and she has had a pretty successful uh, effort at recruiting uh, individuals. Uh, again, as she mentioned, there are some um, younger folks. Certainly, we greatly appreciate the um, uh, the many retirees and older um, members of the community that have for many years stepped up and served as election workers. Uh, as we've been told in many different forums, uh, there are, tend to be the vulnerable population, given the COVID situation, and uh, so she has reached out to them and many of them um, have expressed a um, uh, a desire to sit this one out. So uh, as a consequence, uh, there's a slate of uh, residents that she is So as a consequence, there's a slate of residents that she is recommending the board authorize to serve as election workers.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move make that motion.
I think Mr. Kyra beat you to it. Mr. Eaton, you want to second it?
I will.
Hayden, seconding any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Omahaoni?
Yes.
Mr. Bendel is also a yes. It's unanimous.
I was waiting for Mr. Eaton to say yes another two or three times.
You know what, Mr. Kyra, it's trying to figure out my router issues. It's been quite a new wrinkle to this situation, so.
I don't know how you're doing it, standing up the whole night there.
Yeah, I'm really, I'm really glad I chose tonight to stand up. It was it was a real great choice.
Need to see the chiropractor. Next, under Board to Consider is a regulatory agreement for Spruce Farms. This is, you recall, the over 55 development on Andover Street. And the request here is to authorize the increase in the price for the affordable units. There are three affordable units. Initially, when this was first approved and the agreement was signed, it was a couple of years ago. The affordable, the price for the affordable units was $211,500. And since that time, obviously, the construction has begun. None of the it's just now that these units are in the process of coming online. The developer has requested the ability to have the board authorize the increase, which is permissible through guidelines established by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD and is calculated by our own state Department of Housing and Community Development. So based upon that calculation, the current affordable price for these units would be $251,800. And Valerie Gingrich has been in discussions with counsel representing the developer, Mr. Attorney Newhouse, and is in agreement with the change in pricing in light of the two years that have elapsed since the initial agreement was signed. So what is being requested here is a vote of the Board of Selectmen to authorize this, and then it would require the signature by the Chair.
Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Second for discussion.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Mr. Kyra, seconded by Mr. McCoy. Discussion, Mr. McCoy.
Elaborate a little bit. I remember when we looked at this, and now it's going up a little more than $40,000. Are those units already been built? Have they obviously not been sold? Is that what it comes down to?
That's right. They they have not been. They've not been sold. It's my understanding they're either close to being finished, or they may have just recently been finished, but they have not yet been sold. So as a consequence, again, the when this all was initially put together, the price was the 211,500. And now, based upon the inflation factor that the Housing and Urban Development authorizes for these types of units, the current affordable rate, so to speak, for units selling today would be 251,800.
Do you know offhand when when these were, they were, they're already built. Obviously, they're not sold. When did they finish construction on these units? Just the other week or a year ago?
Yeah, I don't. I don't know a specific date. It's my understanding that they're either just being completed, or if some of the units have been completed, it's only within the last short period of time here.
All right, thank you. All right.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
No, and I'll give a reason why. I mean, we had an agreement back then. I understand that, but I just don't understand. I do understand it, but I just don't like the way this thing was put, and I unfortunately am going to vote against it.
Mrs. Omahaoni?
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Bendel is a yes. The motion passes four to one.
Thank you.
Next, under Board to Consider is the Town Council Contract for fiscal 2021. The terms and conditions remain the same, except that the hourly rate is changing from 200 to 205.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Mr. Seconded by Mr. Kyra. Is any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Omahaoni?
Yes.
Mr. Bendel is a yes. It's unanimous.
Next is the Special Counsel Agreement with Brooks and Durensis. This is for the environmental issues related to Olin and N E T. The terms and conditions remain the same, including the hourly rates.
Is there a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Kyra, seconded by Mr. Eaton. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Omahaoni?
Yes.
Mr. Bendel is a yes. The vote is unanimous.
Just as an aside, before I go to the final item here, I know that there are several documents here, including these agreements for legal services that board members will need to sign. And I know that also Beverly had contacted each of you about the arrangements for signing the bond notes. I think if you're okay with it, we'll just batch everything together. So when you're in to sign the bond notices, you can sign the other documents if that works.
Any objection?
Next, under Correspondence, I'm sorry, under Board to Consider is approval of the renewal of the secondhand dealer's license for Robert Flaherty Jeweler, Inc. This has been an annual renewal for some period of time. It's subject to Section 23, the bylaws that you'll recall was amended a few years ago that requires this license. It has been recommended for approval by the Fire Chief, by the Police Chief. The Building Inspector indicates there are no problems with the application. The Treasure Collector indicates there's no issues on her end, so the recommendations are all favorable.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Make that motion. Second.
Quick discussion?
Yeah, we got a motion and a second. Mr. McCoy?
I think you would like this, Mr. Chairman. They do a great job there. He's also a member of the Guard. Sometimes he goes away two weeks to four weeks a year, and his dad comes from Canada to keep the shop. So not only, he does a great service at the town, he does a great service for our country as well. I thought you'd like to hear that. Thanks.
Thank you very much for mentioning that, Mr. McCoy. Absolutely. Okay, seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Omahaoni?
Yes.
Mr. Bendel is also a yes. We appreciate his service. It's unanimous. Okay, brings us to public comment. See, John, do we have anybody on the line right now?
We currently do not.
Well, recognizing it's late, we will still just give folks a minute. Again, if you're looking to call in, the screen, the number is on the screen here. John O'Neill has put it up on the screen in green. W C T V is kind enough to flash it at the bottom of the screen. We eagerly await your public comment. Go ahead and chime in, John, if somebody dials in, but we'll just give it another minute or two, and then we'll move on. But I want to give a moment for people to jump up and get to the phone.
Still no callers, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is there any objection to moving on?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to announcements. And if I may, I'll start us off. I want to thank our Veterans Service Office. They did an unbelievable job this weekend, putting on a number of events throughout the town. You see the picture here. Thank you, John. Great turnout from Memorial Memorial Day service yesterday, fantastic memorial services on Saturday and Sunday and Monday. Hats off to Lou, Mike, and Patty. Phenomenal job, and I think we really, they think they went above and beyond. A lot of communities chose not to have these ceremonies this past weekend, and you could make an argument that for that, but I think Wilmington made the right right choice, and we did it safely. People kept their distance, people wore masks, and we were able to honor our fallen heroes. So really appreciative of that, and certainly all who have served. So I wanted to mention that, and thanks, John, for throwing these pictures up there. It was just a wonderful, wonderful service yesterday. And then, big congratulations to the Class of 2020. We're all so proud of you. We're also happy for you. And again, I just want to thank, absolutely, I want to thank the members of the board for sporting and the manager for sporting the Wildcat flags. Don't forget that I also have my Shawshank finger here. And I also want to just one more time thank all the local businesses who stepped up to support the kids earlier this evening. Wilmington House of Pizza, A J's Kitchen, E J's Pizza, Rocco's, and La Rosa's. Really grateful for them stepping up to give a little something extra for those kids who really deserve it. And thanks to the Wilmington Apple for helping me out with making that happen. And with that, I'll turn to Mr. Kyra.
Yeah, I think you said it all, Mr. Bendel, and put it, said it very nicely as well. But the Memorial Day service is very moving. It was nice to see the Honor Guard from the police and the fire and the veterans there and the Boy Scouts and the Minutemen and just the people who came out was for their show of support to the veterans. Very moving, and Bev Dalton's mom, who gave a keynote speech. She was outstanding, a gold star, a family, and just just a moving day, all weekend, really. And and as you said, to the graduates of 2020, congratulations to all of them as well. Under new business, I will have a motion that I would like to make, Mr. Bendel.
Go on, absolutely. And I couldn't agree with you more. Mrs. Dalton was the highlight of yesterday's service, and I totally agree. Mr. Eaton?
I just only to echo the comments of the two colleagues before me. The service yesterday was fantastic, so to Mr. Smagley and Mr. Fratton, me and thank you for putting that on. You always do a great job. I think this year presented a different challenge, but I thought it was a fantastic ceremony. It was good to see that the community is still certainly able to come together, albeit in a different format. And without having a parade to kind of feed into the cemetery service, still a great turnout for folks that wanted to just be there and remember what Memorial Day is all about.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, just echo my two previous colleagues. I thought it was outstanding. Lucy Magley does a great job. I've said it before, I'll say it again. He's perhaps one of the best agents, veterans agents in the Commonwealth. I had a couple of words with them afterwards, talked to him to acknowledge a couple of things after the ceremonies. But they do a great job, and it was, I thought it was nicely attended, considering, and it was really nice to see that once again, the town stepped up to the plate and delivered. It was really nice and touching, and it was just a great moment. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mrs. Omahaoni?
What everyone else said. It was great to be there yesterday, to be a part of it in person. It was great to see all of you in person, even though we were masked. Congratulations to the Class of 2020. We're very proud of you. And everyone, please, please continue to stay safe and and really just follow the recommendations that we're being asked to follow.
Absolutely. Thank you all. And one last thing, I want to congratulate Ryan, who's the new Executive Director at W C T V. He's been working behind the scenes on our remote meetings the last couple of weeks, and I think he's doing a great job. Big shoes to fill with Sean Neville, but I think he's up for it. Had a chance to talk to him on the phone today, and he's really excited about the position, so we wish him well. With that, we'll move to new business. Mr. Kyra?
Yes, I'd like, I received a phone call from a parent of a graduating student who requested if we could light the common in June, blue and white. Right now, I know it's red, white, and blue, and I did speak to Mr. Howell to see if that was possible. And and I believe Mr. Howell spoke to Mr. Woods, D P W Director, who said it was possible. So I'd like to make a motion that we light the common in blue and white for the month of June for the graduating seniors for 2020 from Wilmington High School.
Okay, we have a motion. Kyra? Mr. Eaton, is that a second?
It was, yes.
Thank you. And under discussion, and we'll just add that totally agree. I think it's a great idea. Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Currently, the common is lit red, white, and blue under the recommendation of Mr. Smagley and others. So it's nice that we'll be going from from red, white, and blue to right, blue and white for the Wildcats. So it'd be a nice transition, easy transition, hopefully, for the D P W. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Omahaoni?
Yes.
Mr. Bendel is a yes. It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Kyra, for bringing that to our attention. Is there any other new business, Mr. Eaton?
No.
Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, just real quick. I know unless I miss something, I see Jonathan standing, and I know some some folks made some comment. Any reason why you're standing and you're not sitting? Can I ask? Did I miss something? I'm sorry.
Well, I guess. Well, I think we've hit a new low on what's interesting enough to talk about, but no, and I set up the laptop with a flag. It was, you're either looking up my nose at the flag or not. You know, with me, it's always something. I'm either in my driveway in the car or my internet talks out, or I'm standing for four hours, so.
Stand for four hours rather than lower your flag a little bit is basically what you're trying to tell us.
This is being held up with binder claps, binder claps, Miss Omahaoni. This is a MacGyver job if there ever was one.
You look like you should be a newscaster on Channel Five, Jonathan.
The closest I ever came is I went to high school with John Coco, who works at Channel Seven, and he does a much better job than I ever would.
Thank you.
Okay. Best rest of the wood tonight, Mr. Eaton. Mr. Omahaoni, any new business?
No.
And I also have no bit new business. We'll move to important dates. Mr. Hall?
Yes, so under important dates, we have brush drop-off dates, Old Main Street. On the 27th of May, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. On the 30th, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. June 1st is the deadline, revised deadline for property tax bills, exemptions, and deferral applications. Another brush drop-off on June 3rd, Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. June 4th is the Shawshank Tech graduation. Another brush drop-off, June 6th, on 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. June 7th is Wilmington High School graduation. June 8th is a Board of Selectmen's meeting, next Board of Selectmen's meeting, virtual, 7:00 p.m. June 9th is the Joint Finance Committee Planning Board Public Hearing relative to the Warrant and Annual Town Meeting. I would just note, again, as was mentioned earlier, that John Doherty and Mike Sorrentino will actually meet at the high school at 7:00 p.m. to announce that the meeting will be continued to a virtual meeting at 7:30 p.m., and we'll be getting that word out tomorrow. June 14th, Farmers Market Town Common, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Annual Election is Annual election is polls open at eight A M and eight A M and closed at eight P M. And then the June twenty seventh is the annual town meeting. It will be at the softball field at the high school beginning at ten thirty.
Mr. Hall, I think we just. Accidentally omitted that June twenty second, I believe, there's a selectman meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, right. I think you are correct.
Seven P M. Hopefully, not as long as this one. Okay. We'll call for a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Again.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor? Looks like it's unanimous.
Yes.
Everybody, good night. Peace, babe.